I'd like to call the meeting of the Planning Commission in order. I will call on Commissioner Creekmore to do the invocation.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you today to ask for your guidance, wisdom, and support. As we begin this meeting, we ask that you will be in our midst. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion. Allow us to continue to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace to make appropriate decisions that will affect our city. Help us to be able to review the matters at hand in a reasonable and thoughtful way. And let us continue to give thanks for the many blessings you have bestowed upon us. And guide us, each one of us, so that we can make fruitful contributions as we work for the city to accomplish our goals this day. Amen.
Mr. Wyman, you call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Creekmore.
Here.
Commissioner Eberwine. Commissioner Edwards. Commissioner Goodman. Commissioner Hicks. Commissioner Staler.
Here.
Vice Chairman Rector. And Chairman Singleton.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wyman. Do we have any corrections to the minutes from the April meeting? Any corrections? If not, they would stand approved as printed. Before we get into the agenda for today, we have one item on our agenda. The first item, Bob White Development. They have asked for an additional request for additional 30 days for his appointment. It will be pulled from our agenda if I receive a motion.
Mr. Chairman, there's also a second letter here that was requesting a 60-day delay. So I'm just...
That was received last month from the Quakerneck.
That was from the prior one?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Stand corrected.
Is that a motion, Mr. Staler?
For the 30-day delay, yes, sir.
Okay. Can I get a second?
A second.
A second, Ms. Edwards. Okay. Have a vote. Voice vote, please. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, we have six items on our agenda today for a public hearing. Having removed that one. The public hearings are for 30 minutes, 10 minutes for the proponents, 15 minutes for the opponents, and five minutes for rebuttal by the proponents. This meeting is videotaped and televised for public viewing. The first item on our agenda today is a conditional use permit request, CUP 2021-016, White Marsh Plaza Event Venue. Mr. Wyman, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. Conditional use permit request, CUP 2021-016, White Marsh Plaza Event Venue, submitted by Joel Nichols, agent, on behalf of George W. Adams, Jr., applicant, on behalf of Big Bear LLC, property owner, in accordance with Sections 31306 and 31406 of the Unified Development Ordinance, to grant a conditional use permit to establish a public assembly not otherwise enumerated on property located at 1226 White Marsh Road, zoning map 35, Parcell 168D. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Cypress Voting Borough, Zone B2, General Commercial Zoning District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Central Growth Area Core Support Use District. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to conditional use permit, CUP 2021-016. Staff Planner Brittany Collier will present staff's report.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. As stated, this CUP is to establish a public assembly not otherwise enumerated use. The subject property is located in the Core Support Use District within the Central Growth Area. To the north of the property are single-family dwellings, Zoned RU, Residential Urban Zoning District. To the south and west are single-family dwellings, Zoned RLM, Residential Low Medium Density Zoning District. And to the east is the Children's Center, Zoned B1 Neighborhood Commercial District. There have been four CUPs that have been approved for this site, of which one of them is still active. The previous uses established as a part of those CUPs include a bar and nightclub, a public assembly use not otherwise enumerated, a membership with public assembly use, and lastly, a place of worship, which is the CUP that is still active. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to operate a public assembly use not otherwise enumerated within Suite 202 of the existing White Marsh Plaza Shopping Center. The applicant is proposing to utilize the suite as a rental space for events such as baby showers, weddings, and dining events. The suite will include offices, conference rooms, and a flexible space to be utilized for events. All food and beverages are proposed to be catered. No cooking or alcohol will be permitted on-site according to the applicant. The requested hours of operation are Sunday through Saturday from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. However, City staff has recommended the following hours of operation based on previous approvals for similar uses. So the hours of operations that staff has recommended is 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., Sunday through Thursday, and 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. midnight, Friday and Saturday. The applicant has stated that there will be two full-time employees and all activities will take place indoors. No changes or expansions to the building are proposed as a part of this request. A conditional use permit recognizes that uses that because of their unique characteristics or potential impacts on adjacent land uses are not generally permitted in certain zoning districts as a matter of right. Rather, such uses are permitted through the approval of a CUP with the right set of circumstances and conditions that are found acceptable. I will touch base on a few of those, however, each one is outlined in staff's report. The first, the proposed conditional use shall conform with the character of the neighborhood within the same zoning district in which it is located. The character of the surrounding area is suburban in nature. The White Marsh Plaza Shopping Center is surrounded by single-family homes on three sides and additional commercial uses to the east. The shopping center should serve as a hub for a variety of retail and commercial uses in the community. The proposed use is appropriate for the existing shopping center, and with the conditions recommended by staff, it should not have an adverse impact on the surrounding neighborhood and businesses. Secondly, the proposed use shall not be noxious or offensive by reason of vibration, noise, odor, dust, smoke, or gas. The proposed use of an indoor public assembly use not otherwise enumerated should not produce excess vibration, odor, dust, smoke, or gas. The business is required to comply with the city's performance standards related to noise. Additionally, staff has recommended the hours of operation be consistent with similar assembly uses, which are limited to 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., Sunday through Thursday, and 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. midnight, Friday and Saturday. Lastly, staff finds that the proposed use of public assembly not otherwise enumerated meets the criteria for conditional use permits set forth in 31-306 of the Unified Development Ordinance. Accordingly, staff recommends approval of CUP 2021-016 with the conditions as noted in staff's report and the attached resolution. This concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions after the public hearing.
Ms. Collier. Commissioners, before we open a public hearing, the voting machines are not in use yet, so we'll all be a voice vote. The proponents of this item, CUP 2021, anyone speak in favor, come up, please.
I am representing an agent for George W. Adams, which is applying for a conditional use permit number 2021-016. And as Ms. Collier stated, he wants to use this to change the present barber shop to a place for rental space for weddings, baby showers, and dining events.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols.
That's it. Thank you.
Does anyone else speak in favor of this request? Does anyone speak in opposition? We're closed the public hearing. Commissioners, questions, comments, or motion?
Mr. Chairman, may I move approval of CUP 2021-0016 with any conditions? Yes, with any conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Creekmore. Any discussion in the motion?
Yeah, I have a quick question to Ms. Collier or Mr. Wyman. My question is, it said previously there were several CUPs for this particular area, and one of them was live entertainment. My first question is, is live entertainment associated with this one? Any kind of live entertainment or is this just an event space?
I'll look to Jennifer Cobb, our zoning administrator.
Jennifer Cobb with the zoning office. So typically, when we do event venues and stuff like that, that's not otherwise enumerated, it's so like, I could come in and rent the space and have my function there. I'm not going to be operating as a bar nightclub, which has a different definition, and it describes that as a bar, restaurant, or similar establishment where dance floor or live entertainment is provided. So I'm renting out the space on like, you know, just a one-time thing. I may provide my own entertainment. I might provide my own food, but I'm not going to be operating and charging money at the door for everybody to come in every Friday night. So that's why we classified it that way. Does that answer your question?
Is this up to the event?
It's just like a one-time use as people rent it out for that.
I got you. All right.
So live entertainment falls under the scope...
Yes, it would fall under that special event.
Okay. Second, and thank you. Second question is, I mean, we've done a lot of CUPs in this area, and it doesn't seem like it's working. And so, and the only reason we're really here, because the last one lapsed because of time. So we're not really doing anything new. We're just really resurrecting what was already there. So I guess I talked myself into my answer. But I'm, no, I'm, I mean, because, you know, they need something, but I don't know if this is it. But as we're saying, we're just giving what's already been there, so I guess that's consistent. So I'm going to support it.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards. Any other discussion in the motion? No other discussion. Mr. Wyman, you call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Creekmore.
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks.
Yes.
Commissioner Staler.
Yes.
And Chairman Singleton.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of six to zero.
Mr. Nichols, you can let the party that you're representing know that this body has given approval, and it will go to City Council on June 15th with a recommendation for approval. Next item on our agenda is conditional... Next item on our agenda is conditional use permit request, CUP 2022-007, Renee Restaurant and Lounge. Mr. Wyman, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. Conditional use permit request, CUP 2022-007, Renee's Restaurant and Lounge, submitted by Renee Townsend, Renee's Restaurant and Lounge, applicant and property owner, on behalf of Jeffrey Townsend, property owner, in accordance with Sections 31306 and 31406 of the Unified Development Ordinance, to grant a conditional use permit to establish a bar and nightclub on property located at 156 West Washington Street, zoning map 34G18A, parcel 312. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Suffolk Voting Borough, Zone CBD, Central Business District, and HC, Historic Conservation Overlay District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as a part of the Central Growth Area, Mixed Use Core District. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and a recommendation to City Council relating to conditional use permit, CUP 2022-007. Staff Planner Erin Deers will present staff's report.
Good afternoon. This CUP is to establish a bar and nightclub at 156 West Washington. As Mr. Wyman stated, the property is located within the Mixed Use Core District and further identified as being in the Central Growth Area. A notice of violation was issued to the property owner on March 4th, 2022, for live entertainment being conducted without the approval of a conditional use permit. The property owner subsequently submitted the request for the CUP in order to come into compliance. The subject property and the surrounding properties are Zoned CBD and Central Business District and HC, Historic Overlay, as Mr. Wyman stated. The applicant proposes to establish a bar and nightclub for the purpose of having live entertainment to include comedians, hookah, disc jockeys, live music, in addition to hosting wedding receptions. The applicant proposes to utilize only the ground floor of the existing building, which is currently known as Renee's Restaurant and Lounge, for the proposed use and the second floor of the building being used as the applicant's office. And it is not proposed to be utilized as part of this application. The applicant's restaurant and lounge has a full kitchen and bar and is proposing no changes or expansion to the existing building footprint. There is adequate parking on the street and city parking lots in the immediate area. A conditional use permit recognizes uses that because of their unique characteristics or potential impacts on adjacent land uses are not generally permitted within certain zoning districts as a matter of right. Rather, such uses are permitted through the approval of a CUP when the right set of circumstances and conditions are found acceptable. I will touch on a few of those, however, each one is addressed in staff's report before you. The proposed conditional use shall conform to the character of the neighborhood within the same zoning district in which it is located. The property is located in the Central Business District, which has a mix of different commercial uses such as retail stores, restaurants, office spaces, and apartments. The proposed bar and nightclub use will have smoking, dining, and provide live entertainment in the establishment. The proposed use is similar to other uses seen in the surrounding area. However, there are residential uses in the immediate area. The proposed bar and nightclub at this site is consistent with other various uses that are located within the downtown. Win and with proper smoke abatement shall be no more injurious to the surrounding neighborhood than any other permitted use in the area. While the applicant is proposing to have live entertainment between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 2:00 a.m. Monday through Friday, and 24 hours a day, Saturday and Sunday, those hours do not align with the hours previously approved for similar uses in the Central Business District. The hours staff recommends, which have been consistently approved for this use, are 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., Sunday through Thursday, and 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. midnight, Friday and Saturday. The proposed use shall not be noxious or offensive by reason of vibration, noise, odor, dust, smoke, or gas. The applicant is required to abide by all city regulations pertaining to sound control and noise. The proposed hours of operation are Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m., and again, 24 hours a day on Saturday and Sunday. Again, those hours do not align with the hours of operation consistently approved for similar uses in the same district. What we've recommended is 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., Sunday through Thursday, and 9:00 a.m. to midnight on Friday and Saturday. Due to the proximity of residential uses, staff has recommended all operations cease at 11:00, again, Sunday through Thursday, and midnight on Friday and Saturday, which is consistent with previous recommendations. Lastly, staff finds the proposed use of the bar and nightclub meets the criteria for a conditional use permit set forth in Section 31306 of the Unified Development Ordinance. Accordingly, staff recommends approval of CUP 2022-007 with the conditions as noted in staff's report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Deers. You got your feet wet now. Okay. I'll open the public hearing on the conditional use permit request, CUP 2022-007, Renee Restaurant and Lounge. Who would like to come and speak in favor of this request?
My name is Jeffrey Townsend. I'm the owner with my wife Renee Townsend. For this approval for planning, in 2015, if you're not aware, planning approved fat cats hours to be from 9:00 to 2:00 in the morning. So I'm asking the same thing to hours. My hours now with Renee Restaurant is from 9:00 to 2:00. I have a booking in the month of July for an early morning booking at 7:00 in the morning. They want to have some type of service, prayer service. So you restrict my hours, you restrict my business. Events. Also, Erin said I got violated in the month of March, which I wasn't aware that live entertainment is a DJ. I don't consider a DJ live entertainment. So now, once she told me I was violated, so I said, okay, let me come in, get in compliance with the regulation. So my question to you and the board is, the DJ live entertainment, or do I play an iPad for six hours? That's my main concern. What is live entertainment? So now, since I'm here, I want to go and have live entertainment. I want to have somebody come in and sing. I want to have somebody come in and enjoy themselves at Renee's Restaurant and Lounge. It's not a bar. It's a Renee's Restaurant and Lounge. So Erin kept saying bar, a nightclub. It's not that. It's a restaurant and lounge. In 2023, the city just approved that across the street from me, they can have 100,000 people come in across the street from me. So if y'all restrict me to stay closed at 11 or 12, and they can stay open till 11 or 2 or whatever they decide, you hinder my business again. So if you want downtown to grow, you got to allow me to grow. You got to allow me to grow. So don't give me no restriction. I have two more businesses down here that I've been prospecting, and I pay my tax, and taxes and no complaints. Also, the city required me to get a special permit to continue my DJ. So I went to park some recreation, paid $50 just for them to say, okay, you can have a live DJ. Paid $50 for what? I was doing it the whole time for that day. And the rest of the bars or nightclubs or restaurants doing it, we're not doing it just to say we're doing it, we're doing it to generate money and business. When COVID hit, it hurt a lot of business. With y'all restriction that y'all trying to put on business here downtown Suffolk, it's not going to grow. We're not going to grow downtown. They can go other places to enjoy themselves. So that's my main concern. My name is Jeffrey Townsend. If y'all have any questions, I'm here.
Does anyone else speak in favor of this request?
Good afternoon, Chairman. Good afternoon to the panel. My name is Renee Townsend. I'm the owner, too. We received a stop and cease letter from the city planning on March 4th in reference to a DJ. But when I went up there, they couldn't even tell me or show me in black and white, in writing, in regulations, that a DJ was live entertainment. They could not show me that in the book. Then, the reason why we kept the restaurant as a restaurant and lounge is because it was already a restaurant and lounge under Boogie Williams. So with that being said, Boogie was already doing everything that we were doing anyway. And High Ties was doing everything that we were doing. Everybody was doing everything that we were doing. But they cited us because we were black. And then, when I reported all the rest of them, then everybody started receiving CPUs and everybody started receiving letters. Come on, y'all, it's 2022. All this white, good old boy stuff has to stop. We are trying to be successful business people with a viable income and a viable service. We need people in the right places in the right seats. And I'm telling you, because this is being recorded, we need to get these people out that is hindering Suffolk from growing. Because we are not doing anything illegal. We're not doing anything that's wrong. We just want to make our and give back to the community what they need. But since then, but everybody was doing it, but they wanted to target Renee Townsend. And so when they targeted Renee Townsend, it took eight other businesses down. Then when those eight businesses down, believe me, was four or five white business owners, they come over with parking and recreation. Do y'all know what parking and recreation does? They handle outside stuff, not business with a mortar, building a mortar. They don't handle that. So the young lady couldn't even really assist me. She didn't even know why she was doing what she was doing. So we gets this, oh, continue to do DJ, but they couldn't even tell me we were breaking the law. You're going to cite me for a citation, and you don't even have it in writing. How you do that? How do you do that? That's what I expect, no answer. And regular restaurant operates, all the restaurants operate from whatever time to 2:00 a.m. What are the restrictions of the hours for? What are the restrictions? We're just trying to do what's good for Suffolk. And people in your status keep hindering for no reason at all. If you don't understand the situation, you don't ask the right questions. And we're not an event center. This is a restaurant and lounge. This is not Renee Celebration Center. And you put those hours on the Celebration Center, but this is a restaurant and lounge and have always been a restaurant and lounge. And CPUs has been used several times on this property, which has already granted 2:00 a.m. So why we back to the joint board with something that had, we weren't asking y'all for new hours. We got 2:00 a.m. We weren't asking. We were asking to have a DJ, a DJ, which is now live entertainment. But they couldn't show it to me. They couldn't show it to me in the book. So you send me a citation for something you don't even know what it is. And she couldn't explain it. And I'm just asking you to think about what you're doing, your decision in limiting our hours, and we came for a live entertainment, not for you to regulate our hours. That's it. Live entertainment, a DJ, that everybody else that has a restaurant and lounge were having live DJs already. They were having DJs, live entertainment, flyers, but I copied all their flyers, all their things, and sent them to the planning department so they can do what they need to do, because nobody was reporting them, so they said. But I reported them. Now everybody has a CPU. Go figure that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend. We have two minutes left. Anyone else like to speak in favor of this request? I'm seeing none. Is anyone that can speak in opposition? None. I'd like to close the public hearing. Commissioners, comments, motion?
I'll step out there and I want to speak. I want to move, no, I'm not going to speak, because there's no motion that I could really make that really speaks to what I want to say. But so I have this question, and I don't know, I need to ask the question of Ms. Collier. What's your name?
Ms. Deers.
Parents. Can you, first of all, tell me, are there other restaurants in the CBD that are open until 2:00 a.m.? That's what this is, right? A restaurant.
This has a component that classifies it as a bar and nightclub.
Okay, well, then there are other bars and restaurants that are open until 2:00 a.m. in the CBD.
I believe they're coming in for CUPs. The live entertainment aspect is... The live entertainment aspect is, is, um, I think what the-
No, my, my, my question was very specific. I want to know about the two AM piece. Yeah, somebody, somebody help me with that.
So the two AM aspect of it is just for the restaurant portion of it. Nobody was saying anything about the two AM part. It's the live entertainment has to cease.
Everybody's, uh, my question is my question. I want to know about the two AM piece. Are there other, are there other bars and or restaurants in the CBD that are open until two AM? Very specific question.
Just restaurants, yes. Just a restaurant, yes.
Can you tell me what time Baron's Pub closes?
Um, I believe, I don't know what time they close, but, um, I believe they close at two AM, but they don't have the live entertainment aspect of it. I know, what's the other one? Daryl's has a CUP, their live entertainment has to stop at midnight on the weekends and eleven during the week.
Can you tell me what time Boogie's closed?
I don't know what time Boogie's closed.
Okay, I know they closed at two. Do you know if they had to have a CUP?
They weren't operating with the live entertainment DJ portion.
Say it again?
They weren't operating with the live entertainment bar nightclub portion.
So when I went in there, the DJ wasn't live?
Then we didn't receive a complaint for it. We didn't know that was happening.
Okay. All right, that's, you answered my que, I mean, you answered my question the way you felt like answering my question.
Well, when we receive a complaint, we go out, we inspect, and we issue a notice of violation if they're operating inappropriately or not in accordance with our ordinance. So our table-
The confusion, the real big confusion that I'm having is that, that you cite, you're citing two, you're citing her, you're citing the business for two pieces, but she got, the violation was for one. I mean, they were already operating until two o'clock, and all of a sudden, we got into this fuzzy piece now that, now that they have a DJ, they can't operate until two o'clock? Is that the problem?
No, they can't operate the DJ, they cannot have the live entertainment until two AM.
Can't have a DJ, and a DJ is live entertainment.
It's a live person there.
And other, and other bars and restaurants also have to turn off their DJ-
Live entertainment, yes, bands.
At noon, I mean, at twelve, midnight?
Yes, that are, those are the conditions that are consistently being put upon all these businesses.
So if I go in, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just dreaming that I'm, that it's the DJ in there. It's just-
I'm confused as to what you're asking now.
Well, I'm really not asking now, because I'm saying that when you, when you go into a bar right downtown, you can go in Baron's at, at, at twelve, at twelve-thirty, and there's a, there's a DJ. I don't-
Then they would call our office.
Why would I call your office? It's normal. It's two thousand twenty-two, it's normal. I'm, I'm having a hard time because I didn't know that there was this restriction about a DJ.
So restaurants are defined in our ordinance and permitted in districts as, as appropriate in the Unified Development Ordinance. The live entertainment portion kicks it to another designation.
And a DJ is live entertainment.
And it's classified as live entertainment. And what, what Ms. Cobb is saying is that the restaurant can operate, you know, in accordance with our noise ordinance, you know, until whenever it wishes to close. The reason that we have a conditional use permit requirement for live entertainment is obviously there are certain, uh, conditions associated with that type of use that city council at some point felt the need to, uh, find ways to mitigate through the conditional use permit process. One of those considerations is when the music ceases, uh, in, in a way to be, you know, better neighbor to, to the community. This is the central business district. It is, you know, our, our most prominent kind of entertainment district in the city. We've recognized that, but for the sake of consistency, pretty much every conditional use permit that has come through, by and large, that's asked for a live entertainment component, we've consulted with our police department, we've consulted with various other departments, and they, they've asked the hours of operation to cease on the weekends at midnight and during the week at eleven PM.
Ever thought that the DJ, a DJ was live entertainment, but I, I guess I'm learning Thank you. You haven't helped, thanks anyway. I mean, you haven't helped here. You've helped.
There probably-
You just haven't helped here.
Any other questions or discussion from the committee?
My, my only concern is that everybody's being treated, treated equally and fairly. And I can see where is if, uh, and, and we've had a discussion about the hours on, on many of these venues that are downtown, and I know city council has done the same thing. And I think in, in the past ones, we've looked at, whether they be entertainment facilities, et cetera, they were all discussed, and I think the police supported the hours for the entertainment section, because there were some residential units that were related to some of these buildings in the upstairs, and so there was a, um, so the hours of operation were pretty much discussed for each and every one that we've had here. So my main concern is that each and every business in the district is treated exactly the same and fairly. And, uh, and as, as the owner, uh, said, she had, she had let the city know that there were others that were not, uh, uh, according to the same hours and, uh, and that they have filed, uh, permits. I think we even have one here later today. So my main concern is that everybody is treated equally. Uh, it doesn't make any difference who you are, what you're doing, what your business is. If the hours are set for one, then they need be set for one, and they need to be enforced. Uh, so that would be my only comment.
Yeah, so, so they brought up about the park that's going to be adjacent to their restaurant. Have they set times for the entertainment that's going to be brought forth over there? Uh, are they still working those details out?
Uh, at this point, um, they're, they're working those details out. A conditional use permit would be required for that event venue, uh, so they would have to go through this, this process, but, um, I would imagine their hours of operation would not, uh, differ drastically from what they do at Constance North Park now and Bennett's Creek Park during the summer concert series. Um, and, and those, if memory serves, end at nine or ten.
I'm going to be long. But I, I want to address one thing first for Ms. Townsend, um, and Mr. Townsend, who is making the request. The reason we did not comment during the, um, public hearing, uh, was because that's your time to speak, and we don't want to interrupt you. Um, so I think all of your questions were valid and fair. This is my thing. And to try to solve this problem individually, I think is not, not the approach. We, we need to have a serious conversation as a city to decide if we want a downtown or we do not want a downtown, and where that downtown is. Um, I agree with Commissioner Stella that it needs to be consistent. Um, and, you know, just because one place is doing it and they didn't get reported doesn't make it right, it's just that they didn't get reported and it's going on. Um, so, so let me, I guess verbally again, talk to myself, and maybe, and maybe I come up with an answer, but, but this is, this is where I, I'm really torn. You, you have a festival park that's coming. You're moving TGIL from Constance Warf to here. This business is adjacent to where the park's going to be. You have a lot of traffic going, I mean, I'm hoping for foot traffic going from Saratoga Street all the way down to hopefully across the track to the, to the fairground area, where there be life in downtown. My argument is, is this, and I understand that they have people who live in apartments, we're not talking about a suburban subdivision where there should be a reasonable fault that noise should be down at a certain time, you're in downtown. And in downtown, it should be more life, and it should be more gusto at a certain time of the day. And I'm sorry you're being inconvenienced if something goes into one or two, but that's one of the benefits of living downtown. We, we're not, we're not talking about putting this in the agricultural district and blasting it to a clock with a DJ. We're talking about downtown. And if you can't blast music and have foot traffic and life downtown in a city, then where? And, but this is the problem with this application, in my personal opinion. This is a trickle-down effect. If we say yes to this, then we open up Pan's Door, Doors Box, and we're going to be dealing with several of these going forward. It, it needs to be something uniformed. If we decide as a city to say uniformly in these areas or this district, we're going to kind of bend the rules and say, we want this to be allowed. And I think that's, that's where we are. Now, to, I mean, I mean, not to go forward, because we have to deal with each application as we deal with it, because I don't want to deal with what's happening next, but we're dealing with similar things in a similar day, and whatever we do now, we need to be consistent. So I don't know what's, what's the fair thing, but to use this as a test case and not to do it again on the next one, and do it again on the next one, um, I, this issue is bigger than just this application. But one thing we have to respect is the fact that we have citizens who have actually paid money to put this application in, and that needs to be respected, because they paid for it, they asked for us to talk, and we got to make a decision. But I, just quite frankly, right now, I don't know what the answer is, because I, I don't speak for half of all ninety-five thousand people of Suffolk, but it's time to make a decision on it. So again, talking to myself, um, I think it should be extended. That's, that's how I feel personally, but, um, but that's, it's, it's part of a much larger conversation that I think we need to have, and council needs to finally decide on. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for letting me speak.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. So, so on that note, uh, if we approve it, then we're saying they can't continue, they cannot operate where the council's going to have a last say, uh, that they won't be able to operate to two o'clock with live music, right? If we approve it.
If we approve it using-
As is.
As it is.
If we approve it as they submitted it and not as we recommend, and not as planning recommended it, because number two says, gives the hours of the, number two of the recommendations.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask Mr. and Ms. Townsend when I'm to come up? And, and I guess I'm going to ask the same question that I asked two years ago, when we was talking about this with, with celebration. Is the time a deal breaker for you?
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
It is. It is, uh, it's, it's not about we closing at two, it's about the DJ stopping their toy up. So what do we do from twelve to two? Because I can still stay open. Do we just sit there and look at each other? I play my iPad for the next two hours? That's the main question, because I still can stay open at two o'clock.
But according to the planning on page five, their staff report, it says hours of operation, not, uh, hours of DJ. It says hours of operation, not hours of DJ.
Did I answer the question? Chairman?
I mean, you, you can't say it in clear than you said it.
Okay, thanks, Al.
So, so while you're still standing there, uh, since you've been operating, um, have there been any, any, any serious problems? Have the police come up there for any, uh, whatever?
No, sir.
No, the, the main problem that we have is probably dealing with the city. Uh, and we will have some problems in the next twenty years. I expect a fight going to happen, because I'm bringing in a hundred people, a hundred fifty people. It ain't going to be perfect. If you go to church, they have a problem in church. It's going to be a problem. Cops going to come. All I ask you to do is do your job.
And then he, she said, uh, no one's reported the other restaurants, but however, six restaurants not reported in two, three, four, five years? We opened up our doors in February, and we were reported by March. Come on now. And he said he don't want to open up a Pandora box, but they already doing it. They already doing it. So the Pandora box has been open.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend, Ms. and Mrs. Townsend. To clarification, the conditions two states that the other operations for the bar and nightclub, it doesn't spell, specify the restaurants. Commissioners, any emotion, and second, or? Send it to council. We're only, we're only a, a recommendation body, we're only sent a recommendation.
Um, this question may be for legal counsel. When there are conditions like this that are in each, um, each request for each individual business, and we have then in place, um, voted on putting in place certain hours for certain events, say live entertainment is limited to twelve o'clock on Saturday and eleven o'clock on Sunday. And then city council has, has received those, uh, from us and have made the final determination on setting those hours. Or, I guess I'm, I'm trying to figure, is there, is there an option for changing the hours establishment by establishment, um, that would not create havoc for existing businesses that are operating under different required hours for the same purpose? Uh, or is there a way that this could be handled by the ordinance committee, um, with a recommendation to council for consideration for, um, for making a change to those hours for downtown establishments, or wants to review it, um, and get approval by this body and also by council? So I, I don't know if that's a legal question, I guess it might be, uh, but is there a way to resolve this by, by modification of the ordinance to, to meet those requirements?
So currently, there is, there's no, there's no hours specified in the UDO for this type of use. So that means this body evaluates each one on a case-by-case basis, based on the information that's provided to you, the information that staff has provided to you. You could set specific hours by changing the UDO, um, or you can deal with each one and decide based on the facts presented, based on the criteria that you have to evaluate for approving or disapproving a conditional use permit, how best to fit those conditions in based on the circumstances. But there currently is no requirement that says that in the central business district, the hours must be this, or the hours must be that. It is, at this point, up to this body and ultimately up to city council's approval.
Just thinking, I'm thinking to myself now, I'm going to pick up what you did. I'm going to, I'm going to talk to myself for a minute here. In looking at a long-term resolution, a resolution to the issue that's here tonight, um, it, it would appear to me that, um, maybe, since we're talking about the downtown district, uh, and we have multiple businesses that are affected by, um, by this, that, that maybe there should be some consideration for it being reviewed and an ordinance added to the UDO that would cover it for each and every party here. Uh, that would make it a, a level playing field, uh, and would give city council, with the advice of the planning commission, um, suggestions that maybe would, would, would issue, would address the issue here, because I, I just think we're opening a can of worms if we, if we have different hours for different businesses. Um, then it almost puts into place some of the questions there that, are we looking at this differently for one person than another person? And we can fix that if, if an ordinance would cover that. And I, I guess this would be a question to follow up on that. If we did pass an ordinance like that and city council went along with it, would that then allow each and every business that had applied under those parameters for in a live entertainment, if it was theoretically set at two o'clock? Would it then allow those businesses to operate to two o'clock in the morning, if, if that were the case? Maybe that, if the ordinance said you could do that, even if you were under an existing, um, conditional use permit, would they then be able to, um, change the hours accordingly?
I don't know the answer to that question. That's something we would have to investigate, because each conditional use permit has its own set of the conditions, it runs with the land, it's-
Right.
-a recordable document, and so it may well be that the ones that have been previously approved have to be amended on a case-by-case basis, or we would have to look at to see if there's a mechanism in passing the ordinance that you can-
Allow existing businesses-
Yes, and I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, all right, I think you've answered my question. I just, I just think that obviously this body wants to do what's- I just, I just think that obviously this body wants to do what's fair to every, each and every body, and wants to treat each and every body in this city fairly. So that that's my whole reason for for my questioning of-
You just said something, though, um-
Mr. Edwards.
Oh, I I don't want to go over here.
Just, just a couple of questions. You just said one thing, though, that I've been thinking of, that the CUP runs with the land, right? So the land hasn't changed. Well, I'm still trying to understand why we're having this conversation, because the-
So the CUPs do have expirations.
Oh.
They do have expirations if they're not used for a certain period of time. That's what we ran into with the, um, the one that you've just passed.
The one we just did.
Right.
So we had the same thing that happened with Boogie's, because he just closed.
I don't know if Boogie's had one or not. Um, planning will have to answer that, because that predates me.
To my recollection, we did not have a conditional use permit-
Oh, didn't have one. Oh, oh, that makes it even.
Mr. Chairman.
Now, let me ask this other question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If we, if, this last-
Excuse me.
Uh, and I'm still wrestling with these hours. Um, if if we do something with the hours, and, because I heard, I heard Mr. Townsend say something about a seven o'clock, a seven o'clock church service that they wanted to do sometime this summer. If we did something with the hours that did not include this twenty-four hour thing they wanted on the weekend, would would they be able to do it, file a special request to have their church, the church service piece? Yes, no?
Uh, the hours would be restricted to what you all set along.
Whatever we say, so that would, okay. Okay, all right, I'm done.
Mr. Chairman. May I speak, Ms. Hicks?
Shut up.
Yeah. And and Mr. Chairman, I noticed that the chief is here, can I ask him a question? If he don't mind coming up?
I'm gonna regret coming in here now.
Good afternoon. Chief, I hate to put you on the spot, but I caught you on the corner of my eye.
I don't think so.
You know, my for real field's working. Um, I don't know, have you heard the discussion that we've been having?
Uh, slight, I I just walked in, but yeah, I'm getting a little bit of it.
Yeah, we we was having, that's a quick, I'm I'm not as good as the staff, so I'm just gonna give you a quick summary of what we was talking about. We was talking about live entertainment, and, um, we had a CUP in front of us that had the restrictive hours, stopping at midnight on the weekends, um, along East Washington Street, and we'll deal with one, another one later. And, um, we talked with applicant, and they wanted to go beyond midnight to around two AM. Um, so my question to you is, before we, um, either approve it as is, or reject it as is, or modify it as is, do you have any recommendations or comments or wisdom for us before we make any decision?
I think it's the police department, I don't, I don't think we should weigh in on, um, what the board should do in that way. Um, I would really kind of want to do a little bit more research before I say it emphatically, you know, yes or no, up or down. Um, what I will say is, this this does have an impact, and, you know, following the rules is very important either way. Um, I think the rules that are set forth are going to be vital, I think, where the expectations are, and additionally, what the area, the area concerns are going to be vital. Uh, but as a police department, I think what we're going to do is, we're going to, um, administer whatever justice is appropriate for whatever decisions are made through the governing bodies.
Thank you for your wisdom, I appreciate that. Mr. Chairman, I I want to speak one more time. And 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 this is, I mean, this is, this is a serious issue. It it really is serious, and 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 again, we we can't solve all the problem, and again, all we make is a recommendation. What I do not like is for us to send council a hot potato. Now, that's that's, our job here is to make recommendations and to iron stuff out as clear as possible, so council doesn't have a hot potato.
That's right.
So if if we're gonna make a recommendation, I mean, this is one that we all need to be on the same page on this one, because I don't want to send council something that then they have to deal with wall-to-wall people and become something else. Let's have a discussion on this level, and then we send the council, because they're gonna make the final decision. But, um, you know, I I guess, I I'm still wrestling with, do we want to have a downtown, or do we not want to have a downtown? And and downtown, looking like, um, Tombstone, is not doing it. Now, downtown needs foot traffic, it needs life, it it needs energy, you know? I just left Baltimore this weekend, and I mean, I know Suffolk's not Baltimore, but it is nice to walk down the street, and you walk past places, and you hear music, and you hear life, and you hear people. Well, Suffolk is not, you know, the city of peanuts and walking and quiet. We're growing, and we're strong, and this, I think this is downtown's, um, decade. Northern Suffolk had its time, this is downtown's decade. And I think we have to make a decision now on what we want to do with downtown. That doesn't help with the motion, Mr. Chairman. I want you, I want you to say that. But but I I I think, you know, whatever we decide as a book, I, again, my my main fear is sending council a hot potato. I don't want to send them a hot potato. I want them to send something that we are in accordance with, and we'll stand on, because we don't have, we don't, we don't have a way of being voted on. We just get appointed, and we just make a recommendation. And you know what?
You ain't scared.
With that. Mr. Chairman, in regards to CUP twenty twenty-two dash zero 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 seven, Mr. Chairman, I move for the approval of the CUP, uh, with the recommended-
Twelve relations?
Thirteen.
Twelve.
It's twelve, or is it?
Uh, thirteen, sorry.
With the thirteen amendments, and I would like for the modification of, um, recommendation two, and to keep Sunday through Thursday from nine to eleven PM, and Friday and Saturday from nine AM to two AM.
Take that last part again, please.
Um, I'm keeping, I'm I'm not going all the way. Um, but what I am, I'm approving it with the recommended conditions, but I'm making the modification amendment two from Friday and Saturday to go to midnight, for nine AM, I mean, um, nine AM to two AM, on Friday and Saturday.
Second, didn't it?
Friday and Saturday, a motion with the thirteen, thirteen conditions, with condition number two, the hours of operation for the bar and nightclub, for Friday and Saturdays from nine AM to two AM, instead of the nine AM to twelve midnight. Can I get a second?
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks, okay. Mr. Wyman, you call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Creekmore.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Edwards.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman.
No.
Commissioner Hicks.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Rector.
I can't vote, I I missed the public hearing.
Okay.
But thank you for inviting me to participate.
Commissioner Staler.
No.
And Chairman Singleton.
No.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the motion fails by a vote of three to three.
We have an option at this point to send it to council with a fail vote with a recommendation, uh, don't know how to word that, uh, the motion didn't carry.
A new motion could be made, or it could be sent to city council with no recommendation from the committee.
I think, I think it's important to note that, uh, we've been given previous guidance from city council regarding, um, motions that, uh, did not result in an approval or denial.
So are you saying that can be a a motion now made to approve this?
With the, with the original-
With the existing conditions?
With the original conditions.
Yes, yes. And I would make the motion that CUP twenty twenty-two dash zero zero seven with thirteen conditions be approved.
Commissioner, a motion from Commissioner Staler, get a second.
I'll second.
Second from, uh, Creekmore. Mr. Wyman, you call the roll, please.
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, Commissioner Creekmore.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Edwards.
No.
Uh, Commissioner Goodman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks. Uh, Commissioner Staler.
Yes.
And Chairman Singleton.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, that motion is approved by a vote of four to two.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if it's appropriate at this time, maybe, maybe later in the meeting, but I would ask that, uh, maybe we consider sending a recommendation to the Committee on Ordinances to review, um, the, uh, consideration for, uh, an ordinance that would deal with the hours for, uh, entertainment, maybe look at all of the hours for the downtown section of the city. Um, that could be maybe considered in, uh, as a ordinance under the UDO, so that all parties would be playing by the same set of rules. So if that's, if that's, uh, if it's-
I'll accept that motion at at the new business.
Okay, I'll save it for later, thank you.
Because we've got the next item on our agenda. Uh, Ms. Townsend, uh, I guess you heard what what took place here. This would go to city council on the fifteenth of June with the original recommendation that we started with today, with the entertainment section closing at twelve o'clock on Fridays and Saturdays. Okay? Thanks for your patience and, uh, your endurance here. The next item on our agenda is going to open for another can of worms. We've got conditional use permit requests, CUP twenty twenty-two zero zero eight, High Tide Restaurant. Uh, Mr. Wyman, you can read the caption, please.
Fix it.
Conditional use permit request, CUP twenty twenty-two zero zero eight, High Tide Restaurant, uh, submitted by Catherine Machard, High Tide LLC, applicant and property owner, on behalf of Karen Two, property owner, in accordance with sections thirty-one, three oh six, and thirty-one, four oh six of the Unified Development Ordinance, to grant a conditional use permit to establish a bar and nightclub on property located at one thirty Commerce Street, zoning map thirty-four G eighteen A, parcel two forty-six. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Suffolk Voting Borough, Zone CBD, Central Business District, and HC Historic Conservation Overlay District. The twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan designates this area as a part of the Central Growth Area, Mixed Use Core Use District. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to city council relating to conditional use permit, CUP twenty twenty-two zero zero eight. Staff planner Brittany Collier will present staff's report.
Thank you. As stated, this CUP is to establish a bar and nightclub use inclusive of live entertainment. The subject property is located within the Mixed Use Core District within the Central Growth Area. A notice of violation was issued to the property owner on March fifth, two thousand twenty-two, for live entertainment being conducted without the approval of a conditional use permit. The property owner was informed of the requirement for a CUP for this use, and subsequently submitted this request in an effort to come into compliance. The property is located within the Historic District. To the north of the property are single-family dwellings, Zone CBD, Central Business District, and RM, Residential Medium Density Zoning District. To the south is the Commerce Street Parking Lot, Zone CBD. To the east are single-family homes, Zone CBD, and to the west is the Godwin Courts Building and Parking Lot, also Zone CBD. The High Tide Restaurant and Bar has operated at one thirty Commerce Street since two thousand twenty. The business currently provides lunch, dinner, and a full bar with indoor and outdoor dining areas. The current hours of operation are seven days a week, between the hours of eleven AM and two AM. The purpose of the CUP request is to authorize live entertainment to include live bands, DJs, karaoke, and acoustic performers. The live entertainment that is proposed inside the building would be between the hours of eleven AM to eleven PM on weekdays, and eleven AM to midnight on Fridays and Saturdays. The live entertainment that is proposed outside of the building would be between the hours of eleven AM and six PM, and would consist of acoustic performers only. The applicant is not proposing any changes or expansion to the existing building, and there is on-street parking and public parking lots in the immediate area to adequately serve the existing and proposed use. Uh, a conditional use permit recognizes that because of their unique characteristics or potential impacts on adjacent land uses, uh, are not generally permitted in certain zoning districts as a matter of right. Rather, such uses are permitted through the approval of a CUP when the right set of circumstances and conditions are found acceptable. Uh, again, I will touch on a few of those, however, each one is outlined in staff's report. The subject property is located one block from North Main Street and East Washington Street, which are comprised of a variety of retail, restaurant, and entertainment uses. The downtown core is envisioned to consist of a variety of uses, such as the High Tide Restaurant. Staff has recommended conditions of approval in effort to ensure that the bar and nightclub will be compatible use within the surrounding neighborhood. The proposed conditions shall prevent the use from becoming interest to other properties. The proposed use shall not be noxious or offensive by reason of vibration, noise, odor, dust, or smoke. The applicant is required to abide by all city regulations pertaining to sound and noise control. As previously stated, the indoor live entertainment would be between the hours of eleven AM and eleven PM on weekdays, and eleven AM and twelve AM midnight on Fridays and Saturdays. The outdoor live entertainment would be between the hours of eleven AM and six PM, and it consists of acoustic performers only. The proposed hours of operation are consistent with previous approvals for similar uses within the downtown area. Lastly, staff finds that the proposed use of a bar and nightclub inclusive of live entertainment meets the criteria for a conditional use permit set forth in thirty-one, section thirty-one dash three zero six of the Unified Development Ordinance. Accordingly, staff recommends approval of CUP twenty twenty-two dash zero zero eight, with conditions as noted in staff's report and the attached resolution. I'm available for any questions after the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Collier. I will now open the public hearing. Who would like to come in favor of this request?
We own the building and the company.
I'm Catherine Machard, I'm the owner and operator of the building and the business.
Yeah. So just a little bit, as she said, High Tide's been in existence since August of two thousand twenty. Um, we opened as a full-service restaurant. Our hours of operation have been from eleven AM till two AM. Um, since opening, we have had live entertainment. Um, at the time that we started our business, we were unaware of the fact that we needed a conditional use permit. We were under the understanding that we needed one for entertainment on the patio, but not for the interior portion of the restaurant. When we were notified in March, um, that we needed to have one, we moved forward and submitted the, our application. Um, since that time, or since our opening, we've had a variety of entertainment, um, that ranged from acoustics to bands to, I think we've had karaoke also.
Yeah.
Um, and we really haven't had any issues since we've been there. Um, when we were given our citation, or notification that we had to cease and desist our entertainment, we did so. Um, and then we also applied for, we were told, the-
The Parks and Rec, through Parks and Rec.
Yeah, as a temporary type of permit, so that we can continue to facilitate entertainment for our patrons. Um, we, we've had, just to open the can of worms, we did, um, we did have our entertainment up until one AM typically, um, sometimes one thirty, I guess.
Yeah, usually we cut it off at one thirty.
Yeah.
Um, but we are, we're asking to stay open until twelve on the weekends, and eleven during the week, only because we were told that's the only thing we're gonna be approved for. If there is an option, I think all businesses, businesses in downtown should be allowed to operate till two o'clock, and I think that it is a good idea to maybe look at the ordinance ordinances. Um, I know a lot of the other restaurant owners in town are really bothered by this, and I think that that's what they want, too. And like, like you said, we're trying to grow downtown, we're trying to have people come down here, we need to be open until two o'clock, you know? That's what people want. If not, they're gonna go to Portsmouth, they're gonna go somewhere else, they can be here, listening to music, you know? It really affected us when we had to stop, just for that one month. I mean, we lost a lot of money, I had to figure out what to do with our staff, I mean, the entertainment's bringing us a lot of money, and you can tell that that's what the people of Suffolk want, that's what the business owners downtown want. I'm supportive of everybody, and I think it should be Monday through Friday until two. I think maybe a good idea would be, um, you know, the time that you're licensed with your ABC, you should be allowed to do the entertainment in those hours.
So, anyway, so we, um, are in the process of applying for this conditional use permit. Um, and then if there is other discussion as far as the extension of times, we would like to be able to amend that accordingly.
Thanks, ladies. Thank you. Is anyone else to speak in favor of this request?
On behalf of Renee Restaurant and Lounge, I hope this commission approved their hours to be to 2:00 in the morning, because I leave my restaurant, I can go to High Tide, she'll come and support us. We here all try to make money. We not fighting for each other. I like High Tide, I like their food, I like their staff. So I hope this commission approved their hours.
Thank you, Mrs. Townsend. Is anyone else speaking in favor of this request? Hearing none. Are there anyone who's speaking in opposition? Hearing none. I'd like to close the public hearing on this item. Commissioners, question, comments, or a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question, and maybe because they're coming under a little bit different criteria here, but in the one we just approved, if I remember correctly, there were 13 conditions, and this one has 11 conditions. And if I look at those conditions, the last two on this one are not, this one has 11, the last one had 13. The ones that were not included with this was that the applicant shall provide smoke abatement, be addressed at time of a building permit, which probably was addressed in the original request for the licensing on the restaurant, and the other, that is, if food preparations is carried on site, Health Department approval is required. They seem too very basic, but if we're going to approve them for one, we should be approving them for the other, in my opinion. So is there a reason that these two were not included, that they had already been approved in something else?
That's a great question. It appears that the food preparation was an oversight that should be, that is one of our standard conditions for these types of operations, so that's a great catch. When it comes to the smoke abatement, that is a separate condition for the previous conditional use permit, because there was going to be a hookah component, so we just wanted to reinforce that per building code, they're required to provide separate ventilation based upon that.
So would this not need to be in there for this particular application?
To have a certificate of occupancy for the restaurant use...
They'd have to have that.
They would have to have that, yes, anyway.
Okay.
I have a question to Mr. Wyman, and I heard it alluded to, maybe it was stated. Once, if we go in later on and do something with zoning that will, with the ordinances that will change all of this, will any of the applicants today be able to go in and make requests for amendments to their CUPs? Or do they get grandfathered into whatever we decide?
That's something based upon the Williams comments, we'd have to investigate a little bit further. We're not sure what the mechanism there is, whether the new ordinance would supersede any previous conditional use permits or not, but conditional use permits, as long as they're active, that becomes an issue on our end.
So the issue that I mentioned was whether or not it would automatically be amended. An applicant can apply to amend any of the conditions for their conditional use permit. So even if City Council doesn't adopt specific hours, it does not prohibit a property owner that has a CUP to come forward and ask for conditions to be changed.
Thank you. Mr. Hutchins, would they have to go through this same process of public hearing and advertisement and notification and everything else?
Yes.
So the process would be...
Yes.
Would be the same? It would just be very limited in scope?
Yes.
Before I accept a motion, Mr. Hutchins, that one condition that Mrs. Staler brought up by the food prep, did it need to be addressed in this item?
It certainly can be. I think our preference is yes.
For both of them or just the one?
Well, I think that's a decision for y'all to make. I think we, on the food prep, it was an oversight. In regards to the smoke abatement, our position was with the hookah that added a different component, but if, for the sake of consistency, I think it's probably important they allow.
Do we know, do they have smoke abatement in that restaurant?
If they have a certificate of occupancy for the restaurant use and they allow...
Then they would have it.
They would have it.
Excellent question. Thank you.
Accept the motion with the added conditions for the food prep on this particular one.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question real quick. There's also another difference with the outdoor live entertainment component. Is that something that's already with the building already, or is this due to the CUP?
They're requesting to have live entertainment out on their patio that exists between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. So that's a different component, that falls under the live entertainment request.
And I'll make sure, and the time is Sunday and Saturday? Sunday and, Saturday and Sunday? I'll make sure, can you comment real quick?
What are you tempted to do, make another motion outside of what was already in the...
No, I was just, I mean, Sunday and Saturday were just strange days. I was just making sure that's exactly what they wanted.
Okay.
Before I struck it out.
Well, we were requesting, we put it there to clarify, we just wanted to clarify that it was just going to be acoustic, because I guess there was some kind of concerns about, you know, if we got approved to have a live DJ till midnight, you know, then we would be putting off a lot more noise. So we're only going to, we're only requesting to have acoustic performers until 6:00 o'clock. And I would say Saturday and Sunday.
Not Friday?
I mean, really, I would be like to be approved and just do it whenever I could, so, I mean, but typically, we don't do acoustics except for on Saturday and Sunday.
Thank you. And make sure I understand...
Miss, miss, what's your name again? Come back. I just want you to realize that you're talking yourself away from your request, because right now, the request says every day from 6:00 a.m. this, from, I'm sorry, from 9:00 a.m. until 6:00 p.m.
Oh, on the patio?
Yeah.
I did not realize that we did that.
Okay, all right.
But yeah, I would like to be approved to do it anytime that we want until 6:00 o'clock, so, on the patio.
Okay.
Get outdoor live entertainment, it's Sunday and Saturdays from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
Sunday through Saturday.
Every day.
Every day. Oh, okay.
For the sake of clarification, the way the condition reads now is Sunday through Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
And make sure I understand, I mean, although they say they want acoustic, they can do any kind of live entertainment, right, outside? If they wanted to use a DJ, they could, right? Because the CUP isn't limited to just an acoustic guitar, it's live entertainment all week.
Up to 6:00 p.m.
Up to 6:00 p.m. I mean, they're limiting themselves, but they don't have to. That's basically what we're saying, right? Miss, no?
Well, I think it's important to note, once you get outdoors, it adds another component with the sound, so based on the hours that they've requested is how we've conditioned that in this case, but it would not preclude them from having amplified live entertainment in the outdoors.
Is there a motion? That's not a motion.
No, it's not a motion.
Mrs. Staler was talking about it, but he didn't verbalize it.
You like, I will do so.
Please do.
I would move for approval of conditional use permit request, CUP 2022-008, with 13 conditions, which would include the addition of...
Abatement.
The, hold on, let me go back and look at it, and I'll read them out to you so we can get them proper, if I can get the right page here. Hold on one second. Lost here, hold on a second. See, if we had this on an iPad, we'd be... Little secret joke there. Yeah, here, let's hold on one second, I'll get to you. Number 12 would be the applicant shall provide smoke abatement and will be addressed at the time a building permit is obtained for the change in use of the building. Number 13, if food preparation is to occur on site, Health Department approval is required.
Thank you, Mrs. Staler. Can I get a second on that motion?
Second.
Got a second from Mr. Rector?
One quick comment on the motion.
Discussion on the motion?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I'm not going to support the motion because of the time, and also not going to support it because of the live entertainment all week, so I'm not going to support that. That's the only reason, I like it, but I mean, I want it to be consistent fair across the board.
And by the same token, I have to go with consistency, so I can't, you know, the time is just, if the time is a problem for Renee's, Renee's, it's a time, it's a time problem for you, which is, I understand, and I understand that you want it until 2:00 o'clock.
Mr. Chairman, call for the vote.
Call for the vote, thank you.
Commissioner Cricmore?
No.
Commissioner Edwards?
No.
Commissioner Goodman?
Let's make it clear what I'm voting on. Y'all don't got me, you don't got me confused.
Yes, sir, sir.
Give me, give me what we're voting on.
You're voting on the hours of operation as noted in staff's report, Sunday through Thursday, 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., Friday through Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to midnight, and then Sunday through Saturday, live entertainment in the outdoors, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And this motion also comes with the addition of conditions related to smoke abatement and Health Department approval for food prep.
Got you. Yes.
Commissioner Hicks?
No.
Commissioner Staler?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Rector?
Yes.
And Chairman Singleton?
No.
No. Mr. Chairman, that vote fails by a vote of three to four.
So that failed for a vote of three to four, three, four, and that's four against. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And that's only because of the item with the Senate, Senate to Saturday, okay. So we're going to stay with the vote and send it to council?
Offer another motion? I mean, well, I was just going to suggest to Mr. Edwards if he wanted to offer an alternative motion and change the hours. You know, to be honest with you, I voted yes for the previous motion, just simply because on the application, the applicants agreed to that, and, but in the interest to be fair, I mean, I would probably also support a motion that opened the hours for the outdoor entertainment to match the indoor entertainment, if it was so moved.
Yeah, I mean, we have a stickler there because the Sunday to Thursday, the hours are different than the Friday to Saturday hours, so that would need to be specified for the outdoor to match the Sunday to Thursday and the Friday to Saturday hours. Agreed?
Yeah, as long as this time matched the previous time, I was for it. I just, I mean, I didn't see anything about outdoors in the previous one, that's the only reason I voted against, so everything be the same. That's the only reason, because I think we as commissioners has made it clear that, you know, this is the time we're going to stick with, so I want to be consistent. So that's all, but this outdoor component was something that wasn't part of the previous one, and I guess that should be addressed, I guess, at a later time. That's the only reason I voted against it.
Mr. Wyman, if the outdoor entertainment hours are changed in a separate motion, would the process for approval, do you think, have been completely different, given the fact that it's outdoors now and there might be residences within X number of feet within, to the venue?
That would certainly be a consideration. I think traditionally, with these types of venues, we're looking at indoor entertainment. Off the top of my head, I'm not sure what the hours, what hours we would be comfortable from ensuring mitigation of potential impacts related to noise.
Well, you know, I guess in that case, I may withdraw my pre-motion support of an alternative motion, you know, based on that, because I would, if it made a difference in how the approval process through the Planning Department would have happened, I'm not sure that is a good idea for us to change it on the fly like this.
Question. Going back sometime, I'm not sure everybody was on the planning commission, there was an approval for an outdoor down on Penna Street for a restaurant bar. I can't even remember the name of it, but I...
The brother's name?
Were there separate hours for...
Richie or something like that?
The Urbs or something.
Yeah, were there, do we know if they were separate hours for the outside and the inside entertainment function there? Because I know we considered it.
The one that I'm most familiar with is there was a event, wedding venue, bed and breakfast situation on...
This is a restaurant on Penna Street.
Was it Shuckers or something out there on... I'm not familiar with that request, but I do, there were our restrictions on the wedding venue, on outdoor entertainment, yeah.
No, this wasn't a wedding venue.
No, this was a restaurant on, down on the end of Penna Street.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think they did have outside hours, and they were restricted.
Didn't approve it.
Yeah, I thought we did.
Maybe it was turned down. Yeah, maybe it was turned down.
I don't know how, I don't remember how council ultimately voted.
They don't have it.
But I'm pretty sure we voted to deny it. Mr. Chairman, I've got a question. Can the applicant come up and talk about what your desires would be? I mean, we've given you a blank check, we've given you a blank check to be, to go all week. Was that your original request? If I could have...
A little confused. Our original request was so that we would be able to have live entertainment all week long.
Okay.
Okay. The portion that is confusing, I think, is that we want live entertainment through the hours that were recommended in the restaurant during the whole week time. On the weekend, we had just asked if we wanted to have an acoustic guitarist play on the patio. We were told when we were doing this permit process that we should ask for that as an additive to it, and that there would be a restriction with the hours that we put forth. So that was from the recommendation of the planning person that we were working with. So if that piece is what is really confusing, we want to be able to have our live entertainment all week long. And if the outdoor piece needs to have further investigation, I would ask that this be modified so that we can continue on with the permit process and continue on with having the live entertainment. Does that make sense? All week, inside.
With no...
That were recommended.
With no outside.
With no outside. If that is going to, is that, if that's a gamestopper, then we would say we will not do the outside, we don't do that very much anyway, so that's not a big selling point for us. The inside is, however. If I had a blank slate and you just asked me if I, what I would really want, it would be to have the extension of the hours. However, listening to the prior applicant's discussions, I understand that that is not what we can ask for today, but I would ask that we have the opportunity to have that modified if that point in time comes about. Does that make sense? Once council or once the city decides that 12:00 o'clock is no longer the appropriate stop time, and they say, yes, they can go till 2:00, then at some point, we would have to come back and re-request, I guess, for the revision of the use permit. But at this point today, I would ask that you accept our conditions that we've outlined in the document, with the exception of the outdoor portion of it, since that seems to be a gamestopper.
So that we're all understanding, so you're saying to delete the Friday, Saturday, excuse me, I...
um, excuse me, I want to, Sunday through Saturday from nine AM to six PM, if we deleted that for the outs, outdoor?
Outdoors.
You'd still be satisfied with the indoor nine AM to eleven PM and nine AM to twelve AM?
That's correct.
Okay. Can, can we offer a substitute motion to delete that and pass it on to council?
We can make a motion to, uh, delete that portion of condition two, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Could you hold, hold your thought for a second? There seemed to be some discussion over here.
Yeah, I, I just, I just had one question. Uh, you know, cause originally I was thinking it was just Saturday and Sunday.
Saturday and Sunday.
For the outdoor part. That's all you wanted, was Saturday and Sunday. That's the way I understood it, but then it went to all week.
Well, it, it's, it says right in here.
That's what it says.
Sunday through Sa-
So it makes you understand, you, you're fine with just Saturday and Sunday for that outdoor part to six.
Yes, I am, but if that's the game stopper and I can't have that, I want to be able to have the indoor portion. If that needs to be, um, cut from the, the permit, then I would ask just for the indoor portion to be, um, approved, and then we could.
Make sure I understand. So the indoor portion as written, you're fine with?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
So, so, Mr. Chairman?
With the, with, with the caveat that if something else is decided upon in the city, that we would be able to make a revision.
Yes, yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, with that said, can I make a substitute motion? I move that we, um, approve CUP twenty twenty-two dash zero zero eight with all eleven conditions, with the addition of the smoke abatement and the food preparation, add those two conditions, and that we modify, um, the outdoor portion, live entertainment, to Friday, Saturday, and Sunday from nine AM to six PM, just those three dates.
Add a Friday now?
Yeah, add a Friday.
Mr. Creakmore, do you have, your motion similar or different?
Well, no, I think we're all on the same track, and I'll second that.
Okay. So the motion is to, with the two additional conditions, with the abatement and the food, and on condition two, for the outdoor entertainment, it would be for Friday, Saturday, uh, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday from nine AM to six PM for the outdoor section. Steph?
Yeah.
Okay. I have a motion and I have a second.
And just to discuss, I want to say this real quick, and, and, and the reason why I, I did that, because, you know, I didn't want them to lose everything, you know, just for the outdoor component, and I think we made a fair compromise after the other vote, cause I mean, I, I was horrified when they said no to anything. So I, I would at least make that concession so we could approve something. And I call for the vote.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Wyman, you call the vote.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Creakmore?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Hicks?
No.
Uh, Commissioner Staler?
Yes.
Uh, Vice Chairman Rector?
Yes.
And Chairman Singleton?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the vote passes by a vote of six to one.
This will go to ladies, uh, I can get Mrs. Too, but I don't want to mess the other lady's name up. Uh, it would go to council on the fifteenth of June with the recommendation that we have discussed. Thanks for your patience. Okay, where are we at now? We're up to, next item on our agenda is, uh, conditional use permit request CUP twenty twenty-two dash zero one zero thirty-seven oh eight Knox Creek Lane. Mr. Wyman, you read the caption, please.
Yes, sir. Conditional use permit, uh, request CUP twenty twenty-two zero one zero thirty-seven oh eight Knox Creek Lane, submitted by Christopher Sutton, applicant and property owner on behalf of Emily Sutton, property owner, in accordance with sections thirty-one three oh six and thirty-one four oh six of the Unified Development Ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish an accessory dwelling detached on property located at thirty-seven oh eight Knox Creek Lane, zoning map twelve, parcel fifty-five M. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Sleepy Hole Voting Borough, Zoned RLM Residential Low Medium Density Zoning District. The twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan designates this area as part of the Northern Growth Area in a Ring Suburban District. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to city council relating to conditional use permit CUP twenty twenty-two zero one zero. Uh, Staff Planner Brittany Collier will present staff's report.
Thank you. Me again. Uh, as stated, this CUP is established, um, is to establish a detached accessory dwelling unit. Uh, the property is located in the Inner Ring Suburban Use District, Northern Growth Area. The property is roughly one acre in size and is Zoned RLM Residential Low Medium Density Zoning District. To the north and east of the property are single-family dwellings, Zoned RLM. To the south is Lancaster Farms, Zoned B two, General Commercial Zoning District, and to the west is Lancaster Farms, Zoned RR, Rural Residential Zoning District. Um, this is just a current picture of the site. Um, you can see in the yellow arrows pointing to where the accessory dwelling unit will The proposed detached accessory dwelling unit will be located in the rear of the property as shown on the previous slide. The accessory dwelling unit as proposed complies with the required setbacks for the RLM zoning district. The applicant is proposing to construct a two-story detached accessory structure in which the first floor would be utilized as a garage, and the accessory dwelling unit would be located on the second floor. Due to the size of the main dwelling, the accessory dwelling unit can be up to one thousand square feet, and it is proposed to be eight hundred and eighty-three square feet, which is, meets the criteria for, uh, accessory dwelling units. The accessory dwelling unit will be required to connect to the existing sewer and, um, sorry, the existing water and sewer service of the main dwelling. The supplied sur, uh, survey demonstrates that there will be adequate parking for the existing and proposed use. The proposed accessory dwelling unit consists of a great room, kitchen, bedroom, and one bathroom. Staff finds that this conditional use permit meets the criteria set forth in section thirty-one dash three zero six, thirty-one dash four zero six, and thirty-one dash seven zero one of the Unified Development Ordinance. The proposed accessory dwelling unit is suitable for the size and location of the subject property at thirty-seven oh eight Knox Creek Lane. The accessory dwelling unit will not be rented and is not expected to negatively impact the surrounding community. Therefore, staff recommends approval of CUP twenty twenty-two dash zero one zero with the conditions outlined in staff's report and the attached resolution. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions after the public hearing.
Now open the public hearing for the, uh, conditional use permit twenty twenty-two zero one oh, uh, thirty-seven oh eight Knox Creek Lane for the accessory dwelling. Uh, who would like to speak in favor of this request? Anyone like to speak in, in favor of this request?
I'm here, but I'll have to take a second.
Okay.
Honest man.
Is there anyone here in opposition to this request? Hearing none. Uh, we close the public hearings. Commissioners, question, comments, or a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move approval of CUP two oh two two dash oh one oh.
Got a motion with, uh, Commissioner Hicks?
With, uh, any recommended s-
Three conditions?
Conditions. Three.
I second the motion.
Second with, Mr. Commissioner, it was, Mr. Wyman, you call the vote, please.
Yes, sir. Uh, Commissioner Creakmore?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Edwards? Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Staler?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Rector?
Yes.
And Chairman Singleton?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, that vote is passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Sutton, uh, Mr. Sutton, uh, you got a favorable recommendation from this body, and it would go to city council on six fifteen.
All right, okay.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is an exception request CE, CEX twenty twenty-two zero zero four, twelve sixty-one River Road. Uh, Mr. Wyman, you read the caption, please.
Yes, sir. Uh, exception request CEX, uh, twenty twenty-two zero zero four, uh, twelve sixteen River Road, uh, submitted by Daniel Dunn, uh, all phase construction, doing business as Bayou Brothers Pools, applicant on behalf of Craig and Joanna, Joanna Johnson, property owners in accordance with section thirty-one four fifteen of the Unified Development Ordinance to grant an exception to the development criteria and buffer area requirements of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area to permit the installation of a swimming pool to encroach into the one hundred-foot Resource Protection Area Buffer on property located at twelve sixty-one River Road, zoning map twenty-six B, parcel twenty-eight. The affected area is further identified as being located, uh, in the Suffolk Voting Borough, Zoned RLM Residential Low Medium Density Zoning District. The twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan designates this area as part of the Northern Growth Area in a Ring Suburban Use District. Uh, when you act on this request, you will be acting on a request for an exception to the requirements of the, uh, Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area Overlay District to allow for, uh, an encroachment into it. Uh, Staff Planner Brittany Collier will present staff's report.
Thank you. As stated, this exception request is to allow for the encroachment of a previously constructed aluminum fence, pool, and patio within the one hundred-foot Resource Protection Area The subject property is Zoned RLM Residential Low Medium Density Zoning District and is located within the Nansman Gardens subdivision. The subject parcel was created in nineteen fifty-nine and is located on the tidal waters of the Nansman River, which has a one hundred-foot RPA buffer. The current single-family home was constructed in two thousand and one and is located outside of the one hundred-foot RPA buffer. The existing decked and concrete, sorry, the existing deck and concrete driveway were partially located within the buffer, and there is an existing one hundred and sixty square foot shed located within the fifty-foot seaward portion of the buffer. These existing improvements were installed by previous owners. Upon review of the application for the exception request, which was originally requested for just the pool and patio, it was discovered that a fence had been constructed on the parcel without receiving a building permit approval or an exception. The applicant has included the previously constructed fence as a part of this request in an effort to come into compliance. The applicant is requesting to install a fence, pool, and patio within the rear yard. The proposed fencing will extend a total of a hundred and fifty-four linear feet, of which a hundred and twenty-six linear feet will be placed within the fifty-foot landward portion of the buffer. The fencing is primarily located within the fifty-foot landward portion of the buffer and extends approximately three feet into the fifty-foot seaward section of the buffer. The proposed pool and patio are to be located within the fifty-foot landward portion of the buffer within the existing fenced-in area. The proposed size of the patio and pool are approximately seventeen point five feet by thirty-two feet. The requested improvements are to be placed within a maintained grassed area within the buffer, and no vegetation is proposed to be removed. The applicant proposes five hundred and sixty square feet of land disturbance in order to install the concrete basis for the fence post and the construction of the proposed pool and patio. The applicant has submitted a buffer mitigation plan to mitigate for the full limit of disturbance, which shows the installation of various types of vegetation, uh, to include shrubs and trees. The applicant is proposing to plant two units of vegetation. The proposed vegetation is consistent with the Riparian Buffer Modification and Mitigation Manual. Additionally, in accordance with the non-point source pollution calculations, any improvements that exceed sixteen percent of impervious cover within the CBPA watershed require that additional best management practice or BMP measure be installed in order to compensate for any additional runoff generated by the proposed improvements. The applicant has proposed to install a vegetated filter strip at the rear of the property in order to compensate for the additional runoff. According to the guidance provided by the Non-Point Source Pollution calculation form, this is an adequate BMP measure for the amount of runoff that is proposed. Section thirty-one dash four one five, subsection F five of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area Overlay District provides review criteria when reviewing exception requests. I will touch base on a few of those, however, each one is addressed in staff's report. Granting the exception will not confer upon the applicant any special privileges that are denied by this ordinance to other property owners in the Preservation Area District. The applicant is proposing to offset the land disturbance within the RPA buffer associated with the installation of the fence, pool, and patio. An additional BMP measure is being proposed by the applicant in order to compensate for any additional runoff generated by the proposed improvements. Additionally, there are other properties within the Nansman Gardens subdivision that have been approved for exceptions and encouragements within the CBPA Overlay District when proper mitigation is provided. There is also properties within the immediate vicinity that have constructed similar structures such as pools. Therefore, no special privileges are being granted by this application. Secondly, the exception request will be in harmony with the purpose and intent of the overlay district, not interest to the neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to the public welfare. The previously constructed fence is a fifty percent open aluminum fence and was constructed in a manner that would not alter the surface flow of water into the Nansman River. The proposed pool and patio will be offset by two units of replacement vegetation, as well as a vegetated filter strip within the buffer to help address runoff from the pool. Due to the mitigation techniques being provided, the proposed accessory structures are not expected to be interest to other properties or negatively impact water quality. Staff finds that the applicant's request does satisfy criteria outlined in section thirty-one dash four one five, subsection F five C of the UDO, to grant an exception to the requirements of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area Overlay District. Therefore, staff recommends approval with conditions of exception request CEX twenty twenty-two dash zero zero four. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions after the public hearing.
Collier. We'll now open the public hearing. Who is here to speak in favor of this exception request?
I'm, uh, Daniel Dunn. I've, um, applied for the, uh, the permit, and I'm the contractor on it. I don't have anything else to add to what has already been said, but happy to answer any questions.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of this request?
If you have any questions, we're just really trying to do the right thing. We're protecting our property and the river behind us. We love where we live, and we're doing everything that they've recommended that we do. Thanks. Thank you.
Does anyone here to speak in opposition to this request? Done. Uh, we close the public hearing. Commissioners, comments, motion, questions?
Chairman, I move, move, uh, approval of CEX twenty twenty-two dash zero zero four with, uh, five conditions.
Second the motion.
Five conditions, five?
Five, yes.
You got a second?
Yes, Mr. Staler.
Second.
Uh, Wyman, you call the vote, please.
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, Commissioner Creakmore?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Edwards?
No.
Uh, Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks?
Yes.
Commissioner Staler?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Rector?
Yes.
And Chairman Singleton?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to one.
There's no, uh, congratulations, there's no, uh, further action except to get your permits and, uh, what's need to be done, uh, you have a favorable approval from this body. The next item on our agenda is, uh, Ordinance Text Amendment OTA twenty twenty-two dash zero zero one, street improvement standards. Mr. Wyman, you read the caption, please.
Yes, sir, and I'd just like to go on record, that vote was six to one, not seven to one, six to one. All right, uh, this is, uh, Ordinance Text Amendment OTA twenty twenty-two zero zero one, street improvement standards initiated by the City of Suffolk for amendments to the code, uh, of the City of Suffolk, chapter thirty-one, Unified Development Ordinance, article six, design and improvement standards, section thirty-one six twelve, street improvement standards. The purpose of the text amendment is to update and refine the code of the City of Suffolk, chapter thirty-one, Unified Development Ordinance due to a change in circumstances. Uh, when you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to city council relating to, uh, Ordinance Text Amendment OTA twenty twenty-two zero zero one. Uh, Staff Planner Alexis Baker will present you with a brief overview of this amendment.
Fortunately, uh, this one's- Fortunately, this one's a very short presentation. As you recall, this was reviewed by the Committee on Ordinances at the last, before the last meeting. So with that, this Ordinance Text Amendment is related to Street Improvement Standards in Article 6, Design and Improvement Standards of the Unified Development Ordinance. Above is a summary of the current regulations being amended. First, per Section 31-612(c)(3), variances to cul-de-sac lengths due to topographic or natural features may be approved by the planning director. The second is per Section 31-612(f)(8), secondary access shall be provided for major subdivisions of 25 or more lots. So here are the changes, proposed changes. For Section 31-612(c)(3), cul-de-sac length variances are granted by City Council rather than the director, so that will be a change. So similar variances to subdivision improvement standards are approved by City Council. As such, it is most appropriate for City Council to be the approval authority for these variance requests related to maximum allowable cul-de-sac lengths. Second, Section 31-612(f)(8), by updating the secondary access requirements for major subdivisions from 25 to 30 or more lots, city code will be more in alignment with fire code regulations, which require secondary access for 30 or more single-family units. Therefore, in order to better streamline street improvement standards, staff recommends approval of the proposed text amendments as shown in Exhibit B. It is anticipated that this text amendment will move forward to City Council on June 15th. With that said, this concludes my presentation, and staff will stand by for questions after the public hearing. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. I'd like to open the public hearing on the text amendment, OTA 2022-01, Street Improvement Standards. Would like to come forward and pick a pick and request this?
My name is Carolyn White. I live at 4216 Coltrane Avenue in the City of Suffolk, Pewsville area, and I just want to say, if these ordinances are going to be changed, as far as standards are concerned, Pewsville hadn't gotten the first standard yet. We've been having streets to be made, and they do a portion of the street. They told us in order to build any home on any street, consider it a paper street, I knew you all heard about that at the last council meeting, the work session, a paper street mean that they didn't mill it, they just let the grass grow up, they let the trees grow, and then the street's there, but nobody sees it, and then the developers are coming and want to build on those streets. So some of the standards that the city said that Pewsville had to have, but the developers don't have to have that. We got officials who have properties in Pewsville, but because they refused to do the entire streets when they build a home or two, they left that portion of the street, paper street. In 2019, Clifton Street had over a dozen homes already built in the 1995, but it was still a paper street until 2019. And if you remember, they started building on Y Street, I'm sure you had approved that. They had to face the house on Y Street, but they were building on paper street lots, so turned the frontage to Y Street in order that they would build. Yet, that street, Clifton Street, was not fully paved. My question is, if you have an ordinance to do a street, you're telling the residents to do the entire street, how are the developers getting away with only doing a portion of the street? We've been telling them about the stormwater fee where they could run the water off the properties down Taylor Avenue. Taylor Avenue runs from Pewsville Road all the way to 17, but they refused to open this to drain that water off the properties, yet we have water standing on our lots in the ditches because they haven't cleaned the ditches, they haven't piped the water out. We had four major in-and-outs in Pewsville, but when the Suffolk took over in 1974, and then when VDOT gave them the devolution 2006 road maintenance, they allowed all those to close up. So we have one or two main driveways that goes in and out of Pewsville, and that is Town Point Road goes all the way to 17 from Pewsville Road. And as you know, Interstate I-664 was built in the 1990s, and that came all the way down Pewsville Road to Shoulders Hill Road. There's a development going on now on Shoulders Hill Road, they're getting ready to put some more homes up there, and they're going to do those ditches, and they're going to clean them out, and they're going to put, I'm sure, some sidewalks there. Pewsville has no sidewalk. They gave us one half of a sidewalk when they built the park. Well, our park floods, our children play in water, they gave us, instead of regular stuffs to sustain them when they come down off the slides and the swings, it's the crunchy old rusty mulch that they can fall into and hurt themselves, and disabled children can't play in our park. So as you choose to approve these ordinances, please take a look, because I'm sure your records reflect such. Public Works has those records, volumes of books. That's what was said in City Council, but nobody has read them. They began reading them when I said, Mr. Nelson had all the manuals with all the information that you need to do the streets. He was here during the devolution turnover, and he asked them to do the streets. Even VDOT asked Suffolk to do Exit 10. Exit 10 comes down Pewsville Road, what Chesapeake did their side, but guess what? Suffolk refused. And I went to the public hearing, the spring public hearing for VDOT on last Monday, and they state, and we will tell you, that if they don't continue to do what they're supposed to do, which they haven't done in Pewsville at all, 22 paper streets are listed still in Pewsville. They've hidden some on the map. I paid $10 to get the map so I can see it, but they've hidden some of the streets, but I got them, because I've been here, I've grown here, I was born and raised here, went to school here, so I know where the streets are. So please take a look at these ordinances when you're playing games with, oh, a cul-de-sac is coming now. We don't have that in Pewsville because all our streets were closed off. So if you're going to do it right, a lot of these streets aren't paved, the streets and ditches aren't cleaned, there aren't any pipes in the ditches, so don't come saying, oh, we're going to put a cul-de-sac right here, and don't do it right. All standards apply to all people. Thank you.
Ms. White? Does anyone else to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition? Here are none. We'll close the public hearing. I'd like to make a comment to Mrs. White. The ordinance that we're dealing with deals with cul-de-sacs, and previously that ordinance was ministerially approved. With this condition here, with the text amendment that we're working on today, it will have to go to council. If we approve this ordinance today and send it to council, it will go to council on June 15th. So I suggest, ask that you come to City Council on June 15th and give them the same, I won't say dressing down, give us the same that you gave us today. Thanks for your input today. Okay. And the other item I want to make a comment on is, I think I'm the only one here that remembers when we went through the 25 houses needing a second access. Maybe Mills was here, but we went through this for years, so we're going to have to get, if this is approved and goes to council for approval, we're going to have to change our thinking to say 30 now. Okay? Having said that, I'll accept a question, comments, or a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I think Commissioner Edwards and Commissioner Staler's and Commissioner Hicks will back me up on this. We spend a lot of time in the Committee of Ordinances reviewing these things, and the input that the other three members give to that committee is invaluable. And a lot of, a lot of different things are discussed and a lot of different proposals made, and so I feel like that what finally comes out of the committee ordinances is good stuff, by and large. So with that, I would make a motion that Ordinance Text Amendment, OTA 2022-01, be approved as submitted.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Hicks. Any discussion in motion? Mr. Edwards, no comments?
Sir. No, sir.
That wasn't a dig, okay? Mr. Wine, you called the vote, please.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Creakmore.
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks.
Commissioner Staler.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Rector.
Yes.
And Chairman Singleton.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the Ordinance Text Amendment is recommended for approval to council by a vote of seven to zero.
Mrs. White, this will be going to council on June 15th. Thank you. Commissioner, do we have any old business? I know we got some new business. Under new business, I think we have a motion coming from the ordinance committee.
Yes, we do. I'd like to get on the agenda, have the ordinance committee be on the agenda for our next meeting to discuss, to bring forth an amendment to Chapter 31 of the Unified Development Ordinance, Article 5, Subdivision, Section 31-506, Minor Subdivisions.
Second motion.
Take this with a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you got a favorable vote on that. Mr. Mills was talking about a motion earlier. Do you, I'm not sure if this body can, we can maybe recommend, I'm not sure if we can recommend the ordinance study something. We normally get it from council. Can we do it this way? Okay.
Green light.
Green light.
Well, I think we've had, we've had considerable number of discussions dealing with the business hours for the downtown area in the length of time I've been on this body. And I think some of the comments that were made today by Commissioner Edwards are true, that we need to do what we can to encourage business to operate successfully in our downtown area. I was thinking, when you were talking, some of the comments, that I remember for the first time realizing I was old, and it's been a number of years ago, when I went to see one of my children in college, and we carried my daughter back to the dorm at 11 o'clock, because we were worn and slammed out and were going back to the hotel and go to sleep. And her comment was, hot dog, now we're going out and play. So the young crowd started playing when we were ready to hang it up, and so I think sometime we lose sight of the fact that a lot of the party and then having fun starts maybe past our bedtimes. With that being said, and some of the earlier discussions we had, I'd like to make a motion that the Committee on Ordinances consider amendments to the UDO regarding hours of operation, and I had written down here, live entertainment, but I think we ought to look at the hours of operation, including live entertainment, so, and then come back with a recommendation to the commissioners for either recommendation for approval or denial for the city. Counsel.
A second motion.
Got a second and a motion. Take a voice vote on this. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So we got a motion, and do we forward this from Mr. Wine's office to the ordinance?
Staff will begin researching that, and it will be on a Committee on Ordinances agenda in the near future.
Thank you, Mr. Wine. Thank you, Mr. Staler. The next item on the new business, we have a presentation on the Comprehensive Plan Update, and I see two gentlemen in the audience raring to go.
Yes, sir. So just, yes, a brief introduction here, but as you all are aware, we're well underway to begin the next update to our comprehensive plan. This is something that began in earnest back in September. We are, we've had some initial meetings with department heads back in January and February with our consultant team, and an orientation was held with key project staff back in February. We've done some branding, we've created a website at this point. The Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee was appointed by the city manager as authorized by council, and they met on May 22nd, of which Ms. Hicks is the Planning Commission representative there and serving as vice chair of that steering committee. And this week, our consultants with Planning Next are in town with their associate consultants, handling some focus groups with, you know, industry and logistics and housing, commercial and business, community service, land use planning folks, growth, environmental services, diversity, equity, inclusion, and transportation and mobility groups, to get their feedback as it pertains to this plan. And as I listed out those groups, you can clearly see there are a lot of stakeholders in this process. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce Logan Stang with Planning Next, who will provide you with an update on where we are now and where we are going with this Comprehensive Plan Update.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wine, and good afternoon, commissioners. I appreciate you taking the time to listen to me this afternoon. As Mr. Wine said, my name is Logan Stang. I'm with a firm called Planning Next. We are a community planning firm based out of Columbus, Ohio. I am just one of a number of team members we have on here. I will also apologize, my colleague was with me but had to step out, unfortunately, so I will, I'll be taking this, but hopefully want to still have a good conversation with you all about Suffolk 2045, the city's Comprehensive Plan Update. I do have a presentation, but I want to be sensitive of everyone's time, so I think what I'll do is, rather than go through the presentation, I'll give you a quick update and then really pose some questions to you, because the ultimate reason I'm here is I want to listen to what you have to say. I don't, I don't think you need to listen to me talk for the next 15 minutes, so I'll give you a very quick update on kind of where we're at here, and then I want to really get your perspective on where you see the city is now and where you see it is being headed in the future. So as Mr. Wine said, this is, this week, these past, yesterday, today, and tomorrow, we have a number of focus groups that we are facilitating with stakeholders in the community. This is really our first step out into the public. We've had an initial steering committee meeting, but most of the work that we've been doing has been behind the scenes. Now we're engaging the community, engaging stakeholders alongside these focus groups. On the Suffolk 2045 website, we have online activities that are available to the general public. Those will be available for the next several weeks, so I encourage all of you to take a look at that, to share that out with others, because this is really our first take on hearing what you all think about the city, where you think there are opportunities for the future, what you think the future vision is for Suffolk, what you think the challenges are, or the topics or areas that we should really be looking at more closely on our team. One of the things with this Comprehensive Plan Update is, it's kind of in the name, but I feel like it's worth always reiterating, this is looking at a lot of different topics that are important to the quality of life and the quality of place in a community. So we're looking at not just the physical development, not just housing, but components like parks and recreation, community services, education, all of these components that play into what makes a community a great place to live, to work, to raise a family, all of that. So with that being said, you know, we are in our initial stages here. Again, I appreciate you taking the time to talk with me, but I really want to get a sense and hear from all of you, you know, as you reflect on the comprehensive planning effort, this update is updating the one that, the current Comprehensive Plan that was adopted in 2015. So we have seven years, we have a lot of things that have changed in that amount of time. I'm sure you all have had a very active role in seeing just how I'm sure you all have had a very active role in seeing just how much development and growth from a, from a physical standpoint has occurred, but you've also seen, you know, what that's done from the economic side, what that's added to the community, all of these other aspects. So as you reflect over what's happened over the last seven years, I would be interested in hearing your thoughts on what you've seen, how you've seen development occur in the city, how you've seen land use change, and what you think, what are the things that have worked out well from that, and what are the things that you think have been challenges or are lessons learned for us to take forward? So with that, I, I open it up to any Commissioner who's willing to, to share with the, their thoughts with me. Don't everybody jump in at once.
Well, I, I'll jump in. It's interesting to me, because I just finished the training program for Commissioners, and one of the things, recommendations they had was, this should be done every five years. And now we're into our seventh year, I guess, since the last one was done. And they also talked about the interface between the, the comprehensive plans for cities and counties, and how zoning regulations and zoning, what we just talked about, the UDO is a constant, we, we deal with this on a constant basis, but in order to keep everything aligned, you know, with the plan, do we need to be looking at after this thing is done, looking at updating the UDO? I mean, that's another big, big thing that we would, you know, to me, should be, you know, should be done, but, you know, it's going to take a lot of time and, and all that sort of thing, but include the changes that we've had on the UDO, because that's constant, you know, as we go along. But that was my only, my only question about that was, was how often, you know, we need to be doing this, because apparently we're a little bit tardy in what we're doing in terms of the recommendations that the planners, somewhere, the state and also federal planners, that recommend to the localities to do this. So that was my only suggestion, that we maybe look at it on a constant basis. I mean, you know, 2045 is a great, you know, we're looking at something that's going to be down the road another 20 some odd years, but, and, and we're facing a lot of changes. We've had a lot of changes, as you've, you've talked about, and a lot of our communities within Suffolk have changed, just in, within the five-year period that we've had. So anyway, that's, that's all my input into the thing, but I think we need to, to be reactive, not reactive, but active to the point of proactive, to the point of being able to present a document that fairly recommends, you know, what we're trying to do.
So if I'm, if I may, you bring up a, a great point that I do want to clarify here. So in the name, you know, we have 2045, as we're looking out over the next 20 years what this horizon is, but we encourage, and in a lot of places, we view these plans as living documents. These are intended to be looked at annually, they're intended to be used day to day, and a great example of this is what you all do as part of this commission, right? As part of staff's report, you see how these applications relate back to your current comprehensive plan. So in a way, you all are some of the people that are helping use that every day and can help us understand what's working well about that and what's not. But you, you bring up a great point of, we don't necessarily want to, want to just look at the long term, but we want to look at everything in between. There are things that are going to come out of this plan that really need to be implemented in the next one to two years. There's going to be things that are better off for five years, and then there's those long-range ones that are going to take 10, 15 years in order for us to work towards. But these are all important, and they're all things that we need to be considering now. So I, I appreciate you, you bringing that up, because we've had, we've heard that as well, of, we can't just be looking out to 2045, right? There's a lot that's changing today, and we need to look at what's happening, really in the next year at least, and then beyond that. So again, I appreciate you sharing that.
Well, as a, a member of the Steering Committee, you're going to be probably seeing me more than you want to, but, and you'll probably see me on my soapbox with the same problem. The infrastructure in this city is just, on this side, are horrible. I'm talking about the backside of horrible. And, and, and as a result of that and some other problems that we have, we seem to have two Suffolk's. We have a northern Suffolk, and then we have a rest of Suffolk. And the people in northern Suffolk have no desire to come to the rest of Suffolk. For one, they can't get down here, because there's so many infrastructure problems, so many transit, transit problems, so you can't, your car is, you're going to be stuck in traffic, you're going to be stuck by a train, you're going to be somehow hampered when you get down here. How you got to leave by 11 o'clock? You know, there's just so, so, there's such a difference in the, in the two sides of the city, and I'd just like to see us figure out a way where we can, where we can mingle, where we can make one big city going forward.
Absolutely. And just to clarify, so when you're talking about infrastructure, you're talking about the, the transportation side in particular.
I'm talking about transit, I'm talking about roads, I'm talking about, I'm talking about water issues.
The utilities, all of that that comes with.
The whole gamut.
Well, that, that's the cases three, because now you got the villages worrying that when you start going out towards Whalaville, and you got Chuckettuck, you got drivers, you got those places that seem to be able to be stuck, because they're trying to hinder the growth, because they don't want to put a lot of more areas of houses out in the country. So you, you still, so what is directed 2020-45 that way? So it's, I think it's more than what.
That's true, it may be three.
Yeah, more than what meets the eye.
And that's something that we've heard in some of our, our conversations, right, is what does that growth look like? You have the growth areas defined today, what does that look like as we start to plan out the next 20 years, right? Are there certain areas that we need to be taking a, a finer look at? The villages are a great example of that, too. How can we ensure that they have the support going forward and we can provide with them the resources necessary to continue, but also make sure that, you know, we're preserving certain characters across the city? Suffolk has a vast, I mean, it's a large land area and has a lot of different environments in it, different places, and that's one of the things that makes, one of the many things that makes it very unique. So we want to ensure that they all have their place as we go forward, and I think that's, that's reflected very well in the current plan. So we just want to figure out, how can we bring that forward and just really adjust what we absolutely need to, to make sure that that vision continues? So that's, that's a great point, thank you.
So going, going to Whalaville now, between the hours of 5:00, 4:30, 5:00, 5:30, you got traffic. And yes, at one time, you could just, but now, because they don't put up so many houses out in that area, that now you basically have traffic. So in order to duck traffic, you take White Marsh Road and come over around, you know, to worry about the traffic, but, so, and I don't know if they have a traffic study for us trying to do anything with 13, because there's more traffic that's being headed out that way.
I want to say, two quick things. One thing I loved about the 2035 Comprehensive Plan was the use districts. I thought when we incorporated the use district, it gave me a very good understanding of how we was thinking about land and how you have the overlaying use districts, and then you associated zoning with the use districts. Coming on, I mean, as a, I was like, we did it, like my first year on plan, and I, and I always tell people, we didn't discuss land use at the kitchen table. So this was all new information I had to learn, but when we added the use district component, as I was learning, it made it a lot easier, so I love that. But it's just two issues that, over the last 10 years, I really think about in this whole concept. The first one was, we, I was on the Ordinance Committee, and the Chairman will remember this, we had a very lively debate on chickens. I mean, it was, it was intense, and, you know, and it was, it's one of those things where we really couldn't find, I'm just using this as an example, let's just say, we really couldn't find a balance of, so where do you allow chickens? You can do it in rural areas, but going into the suburban, other use districts or zoning-wise, we couldn't find that balance. And, and for me, it was one of those good microcosm issues of like, of two different ways to think, and I think, I'm not trying to quote, but I think Commissioner Hicks made one of the greatest points. She was like, "We did with chickens 50 years ago. We already discussed chickens," you know? But, but she was like, "But now we have new Suffolkians coming in, and they want to have a Back to the Future kind of conversation." It was very interesting, because, you know, you felt both sides. And, and I'll just say this, one of the things that really turned the whole debate was, we couldn't find compromise, because the chicken side did not want to compromise on where we would allow it or not. Second issue that, you know, I think really needs to be addressed is, and this is seriously, because we, we can put it on paper, but a serious conversation with neighborhoods and stakeholders is where would we like to have apartments? I mean, we, we need to look at the map and decide, before we going to allow this kind of zoning here, and allow developers say you can do this with this and that, and then you go into the community and it's not in my backyard. You know, you can do apartments wherever else you want to go in Suffolk, but not in my backyard. And, and I think if, if we're going to have this discussion now, it would be good if we can identify which areas we think would be real good and bring in the community people and have the conversation before we put something in stone, the development community starts putting applications based off our Comprehensive Plan and UDO, and then we get all this hurrah from the community saying, "We don't want it here." So I think we address that. Third thing, and my final thing, is I like the fact that Suffolk has three Suffolk's. I mean, I, I think that really makes us real cool, and, you know, you know, I think with Commissioner Goodman talking about the villages, I like the fact that you can do some kind of growth in the village, but at a point, from the village, you go back to that rural component. And I think a lot of people come to Suffolk because they want that rural component. And, you know, how do we balance the growth of saying, "We want some growth, but we don't want to use, lose that characteristic of our beautiful rural area, especially areas about the dismal swamp and things," because, you know, everybody doesn't get a swamp. You know, you don't, everybody doesn't get a dismal swamp. We do, you know? And, and I mean, people think, you know, you laugh at it, but what you, man, that's a blessing. We, we have, we have the dismal swamp. You know, that's like having the Grand Canyon. I mean, the dismal swamp is like having the Grand Canyon in our backyard, man. And we, seriously, I mean, people around the world know about the dismal swamp and the history of the maroons, and, I mean, it's a beautiful thing, you know? So, 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 yeah, so we should have like that, and, and no, we, all growth shouldn't come down there. And northern Suffolk is northern Suffolk. It, it is a 21st century infrastructure that was built upon in the 90s. Northern Suffolk's going to be different. Do we get the beauty of downtown Suffolk that is with Constance Wharf and the beginning of the city? Now, I don't think it should stay in the days of Constance Wharf, but, you know, but it does have that character, and having those three things balanced is great. I'm going to say this, because I'm talking too much, but, but.
What was your third one?
He said, "No."
He did his third.
I did do my third one. But this, this is my, this is my closing, this is my closing argument.
Go ahead.
I was born post-emergent, and I say this a lot, I don't understand Suffolk and the county. Suffolk is Suffolk to me, and a lot of the things that we debate about around here and in the whole region is annexation and the merger. And so people my age, we hear all these debates about, I don't see Suffolk as downtown and the county. Suffolk is all 430 for me. And, and so I guess it's almost a rebranding of, how do we make Suffolk from top to bottom all 430? That we all are one Suffolk, no, no county, no city, no village, no this, we Suffolk. And I think that's, I would love for that to be the conversation in the 2045 Comprehensive Plan of plan. No, man, we, we, no more of the days of city and county with Suffolk. And, and I hope that goes all the way to the region, because Norfolk and Portsmouth and Virginia Beach, we're a region. We're coastal Virginia, we're 757, and that's what we need to think about ourselves. But again, it's generational, you know, because I was born post-emergent, and I don't have any of the understanding of the county and the city. That's not in my DNA. So those would be my four things. And I appreciate you taking time to listen.
No, thank you. You, you bring up, you bring up some good points with that. I mean, one of the things, right, is we need to be able to tell the story of who we are as a community, and that's, that's one thing that we always talk about. You're, I mean, your biggest asset is being able to say, as a community, this is who we are, this is who Suffolk is, and making sure that everybody is able to take pride in that and they can see themselves in that, because it's a marketing piece for you all. I mean, it's, it's, it's all the reason why you'd want to stay here and be multiple generations here, or why you would want to move here from anywhere else in the country, right? There's, because we are Suffolk, we are unique, and we are, you know, X, Y, and Z, and this is what we take pride in. But I, I am curious, and I'm going to, I'm going to put this back to you and to everybody else here on, I think it was your second point, your initial second point on the multifamily and the use districts. So I know that, I know the use districts in particular were introduced in the, in the last update in 2015. From, you know, from an apartment standpoint, where they're allowed and stuff, you obviously have the UDO, which gets down to the zoning, establishes that and says what's allowed, but the place types within the use districts help to define, right, the types of, of development that you can see in there. And I'm wondering, is, is that tool working in, in all your eyes, or are there certain things, like from a location standpoint, to, to that, that exact conversation? Is there more that could be added to that to help define, these are the areas that we're talking about for this type of development? If, if that question's making sense, right? Because you have a, you have a description right now for each of the place types. Would it help to better define where in a use district some of these things can occur? Does that make sense?
I, I have a question about that. The, our hands, from time to time, I think our hands are tied because of decisions that were made many years ago in terms of zoning particularly, and residential apartments, single-family homes, that sort of thing. And when they are in line with what is already, you know, I mean, it's forever. I mean, once a zoning is done, my understanding is, you know, if you go from agricultural to single-family, a developer can come in based on something that occurred 20, 25 years ago, and through this commission or, you know, previous commissions or the city council, and it's approved. I mean, it's, they can do whatever, you know, is in place. Is that correct? Am I wrong about that?
If a zoning is in place?
I'm talking about zoning that's occurred 15 to 20 years ago.
Yeah, and that, they are at that point able to do what is allowed by right within that zoning district.
Well, then that ought to, to me, that ought to be a part of this, of this Comprehensive Plan, because part of that problem is associated with the transportation, with the road network, with the infrastructure and all of that, and that comes back to how much the city can afford to update that infrastructure to accommodate, you know, these, these apartments and things like that. I lived, as some of, most of you know, we moved from Chuckettuck to 17 in a condo out there, and you cannot go, you're talking about Whalaville, you can't go on 17 between 3:00 in the afternoon and 6:00 out in northern Suffolk, the, the Harborview area. I mean, you, you can't, you just can't physically get out there. And that's not saying if something happens to the Monitor Merrimack or anything like that, it just, it destroys everything. I mean, you cannot go anywhere, you know, from, get from one place to another on 17, which is the major highway. People try to cut back through Pewsville, we were talking about Pewsville earlier, and it just dumps a lot of traffic and stuff like that, and it's, it's a problem. I mean, it really is a problem, and I think that we need to somehow or other address it, but again, our hands are tied because of something that has occurred many years ago in terms of developers. And developers know this. I mean, you know, they'll come and, you know, they'll put apartments in, they'll put condos in, they'll put this and that, and that's what that imbalance, to me, it's an imbalance into northern Suffolk, it affects everything. It affects schools, the road networks, everything. I mean, we, we have seen that in a lot of these proposals that we've, we've dealt with. And so I guess what I'm saying is that we have created, I say "we" as a, a body, the city council has, has contributed to this, but we have contributed to the imbalance of where our city is right now. So, I mean, that's just my opinion, but I think that we need to be looking at something like that to avoid things going down, you know, in the future. 20 years from now, who knows? Twenty years from now, uh, who knows what's gonna happen, but it's, it's gridlock. I mean, you can't go from place to place in a lot of areas.
I'm gonna throw another, uh, curveball to you. The U D O was done, I think, in ninety-seven, ninety-eight. I came on planning in, in two thousand. The idea of the U D O was to make sure that Suffolk did not become another Virginia Beach. I'm in one of those towns that Mr. Goodman was talking about. I'm in Holland. The biggest thing in Holland is a Dollar General now. You can't have a McDonald, you can't have a hotel, you can't have anything because there are no sewers. Okay? They ran a water line down, and the, the thought pattern was if we put, if we keep the water line to a certain size, we can't have tap-ons, so that we don't line Fifty-Eight with a bunch of developments or houses. And I was fine with that, okay? Still fine with that, okay? My thinking is, I can understand why people come from Virginia Beach, and you hear a lot of people come from Virginia Beach and they get upset because we're doing something out here. Why does people come from Virginia Beach want to come to Suffolk and want chickens? I don't, I, 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 I can't get it. You can't get on Virginia Beach, so they come to Suffolk and, and whatever little piece of land they got, they want to put chickens on them. But that's a different story from the one that Commissioner Hitt was talking about earlier. That it was more progressive, okay? That's, that's my input.
You'd be surprised at how many communities are talking about chickens and what to do with them. This is not the first time I've heard this conversation, so it's, it's, I mean, it is, there's a lot of those things, right? You just have to tailor to your community. I mean, the chickens, it's a great one, but that's, it, it goes to so many other things too, right? It's, you can't just take, uh, a regulation or something from another community and just drop it into yours. There, it has to fit. It has to make sense for what your community's looking for, for what the city's looking for from a standpoint. So there's a lot of those discussions that need to happen, and the chicken one might, it might not have been the right time. It might be better in five years. I'm, I'm not sure, but, you know, that's, it's, it, it, it brings up a good point and, and something, especially with the U D O. I mean, that's one of the things that in a number of the communities we've worked with, especially recently, I mean, it became clear in our process with the comprehensive plans that they need to took, take a holistic look at some of their, their tools, their regulatory tools, like a U D O or like some of the policy decisions, and see, is this a time for us to update it and make sure that it really does align with our future vision for the community? Does it align with what we want to see from a development standpoint and otherwise with our comprehensive plans? So that, I mean, that, it, it, it's a great conversation to have and something that I think we'll take into our work going forward of, you know, there, I'm sure there's been a number of updates that have happened over the last, you know, twenty, thirty years with the U D O and establishing that, you know, is this, is this a time to look at it again, but look at it in a, in a different view? And, and really see based off of this process what we should be focusing in on? Is this, is this the opportunity for that? So I, I appreciate that perspective.
I just want to piggyback on your comment. Um, speaking about what I was saying about apartments, um, specifically, one of the, the case examples was, uh, we have a road called, um, Harborview Boulevard. It comes off, um, Seventeen goes north all the way into Harborview. And the thing about it was, the Harborview community basically said, on the left side of the road, no apartments. We don't care what happens on the right. And, you know, again, this was after we just finished the comprehensive plan. Something that simple, if we would have known from the very beginning that they didn't mind it on the right-hand side, but not on the left-hand side, just right down the middle of the road, it would have saved a whole lot, because usually we zone their apartments and stuff on that side of the road that we open up. And, and so what, I guess my whole comment is, because I think I, I said earlier in the conversation, that I think this is the decade of downtown. I really do, and I, I'm, I'm gonna be honest with you. Every time we did these master plans and we focused on revamping downtown, I thought it was a waste of time. That, that was just my opinion, that we keep on pumping money into making downtown, downtown, and making it something. And so I was like, you know, Suffolk has moved on beyond what we consider downtown. Um, and I'm gonna piggyback on another story real quick. I, I was sitting right over there with, um, Jim Vakalis and Ronnie Roundtree, and we was, after meeting, lights was off, it was the three of us sitting there. And Jim Vakalis, who was the former city manager, and Ronnie Roundtree, one of the main people in Northern Suffolk, broke down to me what happened when the Martin and Merrimack happened, and Northern Suffolk basically appeared overnight. Where the comprehensive plan in the city of Suffolk was basically primarily designed for downtown Suffolk and grow out. Then Northern Suffolk came and the Mar, Martin and Merrimack came, we leapfrogged and put attention into two areas. So going back to what Commissioner Hicks is saying, so then we have one area growing in the north, one area growing in downtown, and they have all this stuff in the middle. And so Nelson Park was kind of your connector of the northern growth and the downtown. Well, in nineteen ninety and two thousand, they wasn't expecting Harborview and Northern Suffolk to be where it became. So then you have this expansive growth in two areas, and they try to connect it. My fear is, we have principal downtown, and then we have this kind of growth happening around oversea. And then we have this new zone that's kind of growing and is growing. And, and the question is, are we gonna have another pocket where something is growing outside of downtown that's coming up close to Harborview, and what are we gonna do with that balance? Of, you know, how we gonna balance this? And, and, and so that's one of my fears. So, so my question, that's like I said with, you know, going back to the apartments, because the one, one thing I really understood with the, um, twenty thirty-five, um, conference, conference man was saying, we wanted to build more on less, and so we gonna, you know, we gonna build on less land, more people. And so apartments was kind of the way of doing it. But again, if you don't have community buying in, we can put whatever we want in the books. When you have a line of people coming here with pitchforks at a city council meeting, things change. Regardless of what the U D O says, regardless of the comprehensive plan said, the people have spoken. And then the question is, so where? So, so, so my thing is, since we have this discussion and we kind of compel what we think it should be, I would love a conversation in those areas or to find out from the community, where can you live with it? But before we put something on the books and put something in stone that we're not gonna follow, you know, I say a lot of times, we give rules, staff works for hours, and then we come in and destroy what they're saying when they, all they doing is writing for us the rules that we all voted on. And then we don't back them up when the public comes and says they don't like it, then we just throw them under the bus. So I just hope before we establish new rules or adjust rules, we have a conversation with the community and saying, this is what we're thinking. And, 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 you know, and sometimes, you know, we do, um, you know, put something online and say we do a survey, fifty people come, and you listen, you only gonna say yes the way you yes, but if you know where we're going, it's like being deliberate and saying, listen, this community needs, we need your input before we make this kind of decision. And, and that's all I'm, I'm gonna say.
I was gonna say this, say this in steering committee, but it seems to me that the pockets ought to be, um, at the grocery store, um, in the metro diner, uh, you know, in the, in the various spots that you ought to be going to where the people are congregating and, and doing the surveying, because folks are, I mean, just basic, people are, um, you know, I'm not saying they're lazy, they just aren't, you know, they aren't just forthcoming with their information, but if you kind of hit them in the face, sometimes they will. So I'm just thinking that the, that the focus groups ought to be a little bit more spread out and not just involve the, the builders and the, the people that, that actually do the work, but the people who have to buy the property, unless they do.
No, and I, I completely agree, and I, I'm, I'm gonna spoil your, your next steering committee meeting a little bit, because one of the things that we're gonna be doing and, and staff is gonna be doing as well is, over the course of the summer, they're gonna be doing those pop-up events to engage with residents where they're at. So this, this focus group, this is just the start. This is the kickoff. These three days, the online engagement that's carrying through, that's all gonna be supplemented by people really being on the ground and going to these, the, the community events that are all across here. They're going to be there, staff is gonna be there pushing this out there and saying, you need to become a, you need to be a part of this conversation, because this is gonna impact all of us. And I'm sure you're gonna get into that at your next steering committee meeting. So you'll have to let Sarah know that I kind of spoiled that for you, and I apologize, but that, that's a big component. We call them, uh, meetings in a box, where we can package everything that you need to have a discussion, no matter where you are. I can carry this little thing with me and I can talk with a dozen, two dozen people and let them know, here's what we're doing, direct them to where they can find more information, and tell them to empower their networks, right? Their neighbors in the community, their church, wherever, their, their, their employment, their organization. That's what we want to do, because ultimately, the word of mouth, that's the biggest way we get people involved. It's that personal ask that says, I want you, and that's, that's something that I would charge you all with, is go out to the people in your community and your neighborhood and say, look, I, I, I want you to participate in this, because this is gonna come back. I'm gonna be, as a commissioner, I, I have a responsibility to help ensure that this and Suffolk, the, the comprehensive plan is all encompassing of, of, of all our communities and everybody in, in our community. So I, I appreciate you bringing that up, and that is exactly what we'll be doing here over the next several months.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Edwards, can I get a word in? The, um, the, you know, the comprehensive plan, it is a little bit like the start of a Charles Dickens novel. It, it, it's a great document, and it's also sometimes a terrible document. And when we don't revisit it, but every five to seven years, if you said, you know, there, there's a lot of change that happens in that interim. Um, the U D O, you know, has been around since about nineteen ninety-eight, two thousand, that timeframe. But we have an active committee on ordinances that is always kind of looking at things. And while it's a little bit reactionary, because we get thrown things as they come up, the, the committee on ordinances that is looking at the U D A, U D O is an ongoing thing. And you were talking about the comprehensive plan being a living document, but we hardly ever see revisions to the comprehensive plan. And when you have the timeframe difference between iterations of the comprehensive plan, and this is where I'm gonna disagree with you a little bit, Mr. Edwards. When the, the planning department is basically confined by that document, and there's a lot of things that have come before us that they have recommended denial for, and the, the rationalization for the denial almost rests almost exclusively with the fact that there are components of the project that disagree with components of the comprehensive plan. So the staff comes to us and says recommending denial, but you might have a group of people that say, this is really what we want. Um, so even though we're disagreeing with the, with the planning department and the staff, I don't necessarily consider that, that we're throwing them under the bus. Um, occasionally we do. I mean, we take them and just grab them by the shirt collar and throw them right under there. But, but by and large, it's the public reacting to things in the comprehensive plan that perhaps should have already been changed. So is Suffolk unique in the fact that we don't have any kind of committee or organization that sort of is babysitting and overseeing the twenty thirty-five plan like we do the U D O with a committee on ordinances? Or is it something that, you know, the document is gonna kind of always be, the, the amendments to it are gonna always be reactionary, uh, in nature to, to circumstances?
I don't, I don't think it's ever intended to be reactionary, and there is, there is a lot of different ways that you can approach it to ensure that you are remaining at the forefront and you're always on top of it. One of the things I will say is that, um, and I know that this is how the current comprehensive plan was built, was that it was, it was intended to allow for some flexibility. Whether that flexibility works in favor or not for certain, um, you know, situations, we need to, we need to take a look at those lessons learned and see what are the reasons why, why did something come up, you know, multiple times? But, you know, an oversight committee, that, that's a great tool that we, we always recommend from the implementation side of this. It's somebody who, it's a group of people, a group of representatives who can say and really hold not just the city accountable, but the community accountable, everybody accountable in actually seeing through the recommendations of the plan. So we, we, in, in, in our work and in our process, focus heavily on the implementation side, because the last thing that we ever want to do is come into a community, put together a plan, and just drop it on a shelf and leave it somewhere. That's not what we're about, and that's not what we want to give you. We want to give you something that you can really use every day and that you can adjust as needed. And so one of the things that I think we'll need to, we'll need to talk about with the community is, what does that structure look like to allow for more? Is it like a U D O, like an ordinance committee like you have now? Is there some group that you can bring these things to, uh, to, to discuss? And see, you know, in an open setting, bring everyone together and say, is it worth, uh, amending something now? Is it worth reviewing this in our comprehensive plan, or is it worth adding something? Because, I, I, we believe firmly that these are living documents and that these are, you know, whatever we put out in that, you know, formatted version, it can always be added to, it can always be, be fine-tuned going forward. And so Suffolk is not the only one who doesn't have something like that in place, but I think there's also a lot of opportunity, and it seems like there's already a lot of structure that this could be integrated in to make that very easy and very open to the community.
Um, just, just a, a brief thing here. I had twenty-seven items here, but I cut it back by twelve. Johnny covered twelve of them, so I've only got ten. Um, seriously, um, I'm, I'm fortunate to be serving on that committee, uh, representing the Holy Neck Borough. So obviously, we are very rural. We have Holland in, in our borders. So, uh, one of the biggest items that, uh, would be on my agenda is that, that the agricultural regions, and Whalleville has a tremendous amount of, of agricultural regions as well, that they do get a, a good fair hearing in the, uh, committee meetings. Um, I will say that it, it really mirroring some of the other comments that probably, I think I've been on this committee for seven and a half, six and a half years, and maybe seven and a half years. And, um, and in that time, from citizens, the biggest issue that has been brought to me is apartments. Why y'all keep approving apartments? Why do you keep proving apartments? I can't go out somewhere that somebody almost doesn't come up and say, why did y'all approve those apartments out there on Route Ten? And, you know, and a, and a lot of stuff is by right, as we've brought up, which, um, I've asked questions a couple of times. Just how much by right, um, building space is out there that we don't know about? We talk about, um, planning for schools, and, and I don't know how you can plan for schools when you've got twenty thousand units that are approved, but they don't show up anywhere. So I, I think we've got some, some hard issues ought to be looked at, at, um, at, um, the, the housing issues and the by right properties. Um, and I'll finish with this. I, I heard from, from one of the other members that this, this, uh, is an eighteen-month program. And I was thinking that if you add chickens into the mix, you'll never make it in eighteen months. So that's all I have said.
I can't say we're gonna call out chickens directly, so that's something I think we'll, we'll keep, we'll at least hint at if we need to, but I don't think we're gonna put in directly. Any other thoughts? Or one question I will also pose out there, is, is there something in particular that you, you feel that we should be looking at that you haven't already shared? This has been exactly what I was hoping to get from, and I, again, I appreciate you giving, giving me your, your insights so far. But other, other topics, or is there, uh, anything else that you've heard from the community or has something that you've experienced that you think we need to be taking a look at as we dive deeper into the process? Seen anything?
It would only be wrong not to say, since we talked about how bad Seventeen is, that if you need to go to Holland right now, you're not gonna get there for three or four hours, so. And that'd be Route Fifty-Eight.
Awesome. All right. Well, well, this, like I said, this is really the beginning of our conversation. So this is not the, the only time that you'll be seeing me or, or members of our team. We will certainly be coming back and we will have other touchpoints with you all. So I really do appreciate you taking the time and adding me onto your agenda here. And, and if you have any questions or anything, I, I encourage you to reach out to a member of our team. Um, I also will, will encourage that you share out the Suffolk twenty forty-five, the online engagements, and look for those in-person ones that we're gonna have over the next, the next few months into the summer, because I think that's really, like I said, the word of mouth is gonna be our biggest, our biggest way of getting people involved. So thank you all again so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Stock. Thanks, Commissioners, for participating in this discussion. Uh, we have two other items on the agenda that we need to cover. Uh, the city council meeting of April twentieth, Mr. Wyatt?
Yes, sir. There was a lot on that agenda, so I'll, I'll try to get through it quickly. But, uh, rezoning, RZN twenty twenty-one zero zero. RZN 2021 00022240 Gloucester Street, that was a rezoning from M2 to RM, that was approved. Rezoning request, there were two items related to Hope Center Ministries, you may recall, a rezoning from RLM to OI, and a conditional use permit to establish a physical mental rehabilitation resident facility. Both of those items were approved. There was a conditional use permit for an accessory dwelling at 5226 Regatta Point Road, that was CUP 2022 003, that was approved with with conditions. And conditional use permit request, CUP 2022 005, 315 Bullock Street, that was a conditional use permit to restore non-conforming residential structure to an extent of greater than 50% of its replacement cost, that was approved with conditions. The conditional use permit request, CUP 2021 026, that was a telecommunications fiber optics appointed presence site for Chantel at 120, 122, and 124 South 5th Street, that application was denied.
I have a question about that. Didn't we approve that?
You've recommended approval, yes, sir.
What was the reason that the city council denied it?
At the city council meeting, their property owners in the vicinity on the street came out in opposition.
And they didn't, they really didn't come in opposition to us, right?
No, they hit me. No, I'm just joking.
No, I mean, but they didn't have, we didn't have any feedback from the community.
We have no memory plats, and commissioners, they need additional comments.
I just, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Hitt.
No, I just have one, because I know that going forward, we probably got four to six more of these coming, the CUPs for the live entertainment, for the buildings that are staying open after 11 o'clock. So just understand that my, I don't care how far we go, until that, as long as Barron's is the Barron's Pub, for me, is the, is the, whatever you call. Is the threshold, and everybody else meets the threshold. Everybody else does not meet the 2:00 AM threshold, then I'm always going to be a no. Just let you know.
Excuse me, Mr.? I just wanted to take a moment to, A, apologize for being late for the meeting, but I had a good reason. My wife, who has been teaching school for over 40 years, walked out of her last classroom this afternoon at 2:05, and they had assembled a big group of people, surprised her when she walked out, the whole hallway was lined with students, former students, fellow teachers and whatnot, and so she basically had to walk through a gauntlet of applause. And it's a well-deserved retirement, and, you know, it it underscores just how important teachers are to our community. And if you look back over her 40-some-year career and the number of lives that she has touched, it's just, it's, it's remarkable. And she always said that she was gonna retire before she taught somebody's grandchild that she had taught originally, and I think she's beaten that. So she's taught lots of, lots of children of people that she's had in the classroom, but no grandchildren. But anyway, I just just want to offer congratulations to her for a well-deserved retirement and an excellent career.
That's great. That's great.
Are you ready for her being home?
Well, as I jokingly told somebody, now I can look forward to living the life that I should have been living, or should have been accustomed to for the last 40 years. But no, she, I don't know what we're gonna do. We're gonna sit down and think about it, but I'm sure we're gonna do some traveling and everything else when people do, when they retire. I don't know anybody that's retired that that all of a sudden says, boy, I got a lot of extra time on my hands. They always find some way to fill it.
There's no other comments, so thank you for your participation today. I want to thank staff, beer, and congratulate Ms. Dean for, dears, I'm sorry, I'm looking right at her and saying, dears, yeah, for getting your feet wet, and you did a good job. Okay? Stand adjourned.